Good evening. I'd like to call the -- to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for June the 18th, 2012. At this time, again, if you have any kind of cellular device, please turn them off or silence them. We welcome everybody here tonight. It's always great to have a packed house. But this time, if you will, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Carruth?
(Inaudible)
We have Chaplain -- here we go. Bernadette Lou is from Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. Thank you and welcome.
Good evening, ma'am. How are you? Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, your word commands us to pray for those in the system of human governance you've ordained and for those who have been elected to serve in it, that you've sovereignly and providentially appointed these positions because your word says you raise up leaders and you take them down. We come to this evening prior to this commission meeting, opening for official business here in this county, to decide issues that affect citizens of this county, and we pray as the Apostle Paul instructed Timothy Ryan, that he said, "First of all, then I urge you, supplications, prayers, and intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way, for this is the good -- for this is good and pleasing, the sight of God, our Savior." We also ask for this governing body in this time of economic uncertainty, the wisdom and discernment to deal with some tough issues. We also pray for us as county employees and those who are elected here to remember we are the servants of the taxpayers and we serve at their pleasure, and here we are, we are able to serve them and their families, providing fair and just impartial government in dealing with the citizens. For your word also says in Proverbs, "When the righteous earn authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked man rules, the people groan and sigh." Let us hand our positions of government such a way that it honors and glorifies you, and we pray this in the name of your Son and our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
The first item, commissioners, that we have on our agenda is approval or correction of the meeting minutes for May 21st, May 22nd, and May 24th.
Move for approval?
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is the approval of the agenda. There are a few changes to the agenda, as you should be aware. Sorry, let me get to that page. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, first up, we always enjoy doing recognitions and presentations. Ben Rose is here. I know, there you are. I knew, I saw you. To recognize Joyce Plummer on her retirement from Cabarrus County Department of Social Services. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We are pleased to recognize Joe Plummer. She has -- I might have turned that on, I'm sorry. She has 26 years of service with Cabarrus County. Not all in one shot. She left us after 10 years. I didn't even realize that till tonight, but she came back, and that was the important thing. Joe has fulfilled many functions within the department. She's done Medicaid, she's done food stamps, but her last bit of her career since she came back has been mostly providing adult services. The CAT program, she's worked within the CAT program. She's done adult in-home services, adult daycare and intake. Joe has been very instrumental in the development of our volunteer program, which has been a wonderful program that has really flourished over the last two or three years. Who we're going to get to take that over? I don't know, because she's just done an excellent job for us. But we're sad to see her leave, but happy for her and want to recognize her tonight. So Joe, come on up. And on behalf of the county commissioners, they'd like to present you this gift, and thank you for all your service to the county. And you're welcome to say a word if you'd like.
Sure. I'd like to say I've enjoyed working for all the citizens of the county, had a lot of great experiences. I wish I weren't bound by confidentiality. I could write a book and it would be a bestseller, believe me. But I have enjoyed it and thank you, and please continue to support DSS. We do a very good job and they work very, very hard there. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of all the commissioners, we sincerely appreciate everything that you have done. You do make Cabarrus County a much better place for us to live. Thank you. We have a wonderful group of youngsters. I guess if I called them youngsters, they might not like that as much, though, because they're graduates now, most of them, that we're going to recognize tonight. So we have the graduating seniors from our Cabarrus County Youth Council, and Debbie Boss is here. And Commissioner Meesmer, are you going to assist? Welcome.
Madam Chairman, fellow commissioners, we thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight in recognition of a wonderful group of youth that are truly motivated in learning more about government, and they work hard to stamp out apathy and want to engage other youth in learning more about government and politics, and they truly are on top of the issues. It is a great group of youth to work with and has been my privilege and honor to do so. Tonight, I would like, we do have some of our other council members with us, if all the youth council members that are here would please stand up. Go ahead, stand up. Okay. And then if my two seniors that are here would come forward, this is after graduation, and there are a few that have gone away with their families, so they're not able to be with us tonight, but we do have two seniors with us, and one of which is our Youth Council President, and both of these young ladies have worked very hard to create the council, work with the council, and develop this group into a group of youth where we have seven or eight applications now per seat available from each school. And so youth now are seeing this as an opportunity to become very involved, and we really are excited about that and the things that we're going to be able to do in the future as a result of their hard work in this inaugural group. So, Chris, if you'll come forward, we've got some certificates for our graduating seniors. First, we have Taylor Furr. And then we have Elena Dean, and Elena was our president. The other graduating seniors include Cameron Watson, Ian Smith, Elabeth Wickliffe, Georgie Ziamah, and Wells King. These were our seniors. We thank them for their hard work and dedication, and what a wonderful group it is to work with. To the families of this youth that are here tonight, thank you for all that you do to make their leadership in county government possible. Thank you.
Commissioner Meesmer, would you like to add your comments? Yeah, I know you've worked really, really hard with this group, so.
I have, and, you know, to the graduating seniors, I know there's two of you here, and I just want to say thank you very much for your willingness to serve and your participation. And we just concluded an end-of-year banquet right before the meeting, where we had a dinner, and I know I've already told you this once, but I do sincerely appreciate it, and I know you guys have very bright futures, and, like I said, just take advantage of all your opportunities. Your youth will only last for so long, so thank you very much.
And we don't have this on the list, but I did want to take a moment to recognize the Sidney Lanier Book Club, which was established by a group of Concord residents in 1936, and they celebrated their 75th anniversary today. Is a group that meets monthly to, like all book clubs, to share ideas and exchange books and share the love of reading, and they have a display that, to commemorate their celebration of their 75th anniversary, over at the Concord Museum, and that is there until Wednesday, June the 20th, so I would like to encourage people to go by the Concord Museum and see the display, and I think it's pretty cool. I'm a member of a book club. They pick on me because I read the books and don't get there half the time because of other meetings, but it's pretty cool to think that we have a group in town that's been meeting as an organization for 75 years for the sole purpose of literacy and reading. So congratulations to the members of the Sidney Lanier Book Club. Becky Ewart is the current president, and Kathy Jewitt is the president-elect. So, okay. Next up, we have informal public comments, and again, if I have a yellow card from you that has anything to do with the budget, I will call on you during the public hearing for the budget. I have three cards that, now that I'm going to call on for informal public comments, and we will start with Price Crutchfield. And as a reminder, which I know you're aware of, there is a three-minute timer in front of you on the podium.
Okay.
Welcome, sir.
Hey, thanks for the opportunity. I don't get this opportunity at city council. They shorten, condense, and abridge. And the mayor over there, he's responsible for it, and the chief of police. Recently, I heard some impressions about him at the sheriff's department. There was a sheriff's deputy here a few years back. He was implicated, and supposedly, I got this from several folks, that he was seen on camera stealing tobacco. And I questioned the proprietor of the store, or the person that worked there, and I asked him, said, "Do you prosecute shoplifters?" And he said, "Well, shoplifters will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law." But then, as I investigated and went further, I called the sheriff. I called Sheriff Riley, and I asked him, I said, "Can you comment on this?" He said, "No, I can be put in jail. I can be arrested and put in jail because this is personnel issue." So that's why I'm here tonight. The sheriff can't talk about it. And so I'm just curious as to if they prosecute to the full extent of the law, and from what I've gathered, he wasn't prosecuted, but he's no longer with the sheriff's department. I'm struggling with this. We've got to stop this shoplifting, and I think it should apply to everybody. How many others have shoplifted with law enforcement in Concord and nothing done about it? They drink liquor on school property. Concord police were drinking liquor over a J. and Frye's school. Not one thing happened to them. Not one thing. They can lie under oath in court. Scott Newell with the Concord Police, he's a captain. He arrested me, and he got in court, and he lied in court, under oath to Judge Hamby, when he said, "Your Honor, he's come into restaurants and harassed my family." He's a liar and thief. I challenged this person or the Concord Police force to show why they ever went into the restaurants and harassed this man's family. Just outright lies. Then, over here at the Whataburger, when I was warning my fellow citizens that there was this police officer in Columbia, they were looking for this guy for molesting little boys. He had joined up Big Brothers of America. When I was warning my fellow citizens about this, here comes Ron Green, who represents himself as being with the Concord Police. "I know my boss, he's my friend. I'm gonna get you barred from the Whataburger." And he did. He's got plenty of dough. Big pawn shop, big shop. So, anyway, I got barred from the Whataburger, but I want everybody to know why I got barred from the Whataburger. I was talking about this police officer molesting these little boys. I don't know if they caught him yet or not. I was trying to do my part. Of course, we all know about this Jay Robinson School thing, where that Concord Police Officer was allowed to make a plea bargain after being charged with a sex crime against a minor allowed to make a plea bargain and not register as a sex offender. Now, I think the law should apply to everybody evenly. The police told me that they have nothing to do with the courts. I call them a liar. They have a whole bunch to do with the courts. I found that out. I've been arrested 17 times, and I didn't molest nobody's kids or sell nobody no drugs. I didn't drink no liquor on school property. Jesus loves you. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield. Next up, we have A.L. Fleming.
Good evening. I'd like to address the commission this evening with regard to the proposed sale that you have, or rather, request for a bid for the Old Bethel School. As you know, in last year of May of 2011, Woodston University, which I represent, made an offer to the county to purchase the property. Through our subsequent negotiations at that time, we were unable to come to amenable terms that allow both parties to be satisfied. At your last regularly scheduled work session, you decided that you would reopen bids for that property with removal of the restrictions that prevented the university from moving forward with the county initially. Our request this evening is that you would consider rescinding your current bid for purchase for the property and moving forward with the university now to purchase the property with the restrictions removed at the original cost that we presented to the county. Rather, should I say, the bid that we presented to the county. So I ask that you take that into consideration, that you rescind your previous order to issue a new bid for proposals for the Old Bethel School property, and that the county staff and Woodston University staff return to the table and complete an agreement which will allow us to proceed with the removal of all restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Charles Phillips. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, commissioners. I stand before you in probably my last public act as chairman of the Cabarrus Health Alliance Board, and I just wanted to thank you and your predecessors on this commission for giving me the opportunity to be of service to the county. It has been a very meaningful part of my life, and I just wanted to thank you and proclaim a blessing over each of you personally and as a board. And I just, one thing I thought was good to note publicly in this time of budget hearings, you are not aware yet, but our budget, the Health Alliance budget includes not a single dollar of county money for clinical services. We did it. I know that was something you were very interested in, and we were able to pull it off. We got a good settlement from Medicaid, and I'm also delighted to be here to hear your deliberation on our board candidates. We've got two excellent ones in James Mack and Tom Kincaid. They're both here. Should you have any questions of me or them when you're discussing that, we'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have. And again, thank you very much.
Charles, I would like to say that since I've been a commissioner, you have always come and represented the Health Alliance very well, and I think we all, as I said earlier, we have all become a better county as a result of your service on the Health Alliance Board, and I believe that the other commissioners would agree with that. Thank you very much. It takes a lot of your time and effort, and it is obviously something that you have loved doing.
Well, thank you. I will tell you, they embarrassed the fool out of me. They named the commission board for, the boardroom for me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's not a bad embarrassment. Thank you, sir. Okay. The next item that we have is old business, of which we have none. So we will move on to the consent agenda. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Can we, number three, shows part of, you go back to page 58, can we get an explanation of what all this is for?
I need to see, Ben? I don't know if you heard that, what we have on number three, which you don't have, or Jonathan, if you have any.
HCCBG.
HCCBG funding plan and reorganization. Do you have a question?
Also, how much is this grant for?
I don't have it right in front of me. I believe the grant, HCCBG funded, and Mike is here, too. He can probably help. It's around $700, okay, about $780,000, I believe.
Is that federal or state?
That's federal. We have a local match.
A local match?
Yes.
From the state or from county?
From the county.
Want Mike to come up to help?
Yeah, Mike can come up to it. He's much more knowledgeable about it than I am in a lot of ways.
It's actually a federal grant that is matched by the state, and then it comes to the county, and then there's a temporary match required by the county also. So it's federal and state money by the time it gets to us at the county level, and then the match is local.
But does the state give us $700,000 or something thousand, or is that just from the county?
Now, the $700-plus thousand is the federal and state money. The match goes on top of it, with the county match is slightly over $100,000.
And also, this eliminates the Department of Aging and puts that in the Parks. Where does the Department of Aging wind up at now? DSS?
It doesn't eliminate.
They don't have one.
It doesn't eliminate the Department of Aging.
Well, that's what it said here, I thought.
No, it doesn't eliminate the Department of Aging.
This grant is monies that fund the programs and the services that are currently in the Department of Aging. The amount of money will not change. It'll be separating that money into part going into Human Services and part going into the Parks Department, which that will house, and those two departments will house the services of aging and the programs of aging. So none of those programs and services will go away.
This says eliminates the Department of Aging.
As a HCCBG service provider.
If I can address that.
How much savings is the county going to get by putting all these departments together?
I think that's a budget discussion item versus this one. If you want to pull this one, we can pull it and put it with the budget.
No, I'd like to do that.
But, I mean, otherwise, I mean, I think the question that you're trying to ask has to do more with just the general budget itself. You're welcome to answer.
Okay, that, the. It's also got Parks Department in here.
Right.
Which you're going to put the senior citizens under.
The senior center.
Yeah.
Okay. What we're, what the proposal is here pertains only to the block grant funding plan. So within the structure of the funding plan, which is the money coming in, we had to restructure it. So there was no Human Services Department. There was a Social Services and Transportation Department of Aging. So we dissolved Department of Aging, Social Services, and Transportation, and combined those services under Human Services. We also brought Parks in as a new provider agency under the funding plan to receive the funds for the senior center portion that was within the Department of Aging. But when we're talking about dissolving, it wasn't dissolving the department, it's dissolving the structure within the block grant to reorganize it so it'll work within the state structure.
Well, what I'm trying to be sure of is that the seniors understand what's been done and why it's been done, and I mean, I know some seniors feel like they've been taken advantage of, and that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of, and that's reason I'd like to pull this until we get to and hear what the seniors have to say.
This, this, this item on our agenda is dealing solely with a grant.
It's also putting these departments together.
I, no, the reorganization that you're discussing is under the budget. That's, the reorganization would take place if the budget passes. That's on the budget vote. This is strictly for.
All right. Y'all leave it like it is if you want to.
This is identifying the.
Funds, I know what it's identifying.
Yeah, who's going to, who's responsible for the funds. That's what that's doing.
Okay. If you want to get to the budget and vote on it, fine.
I'm more than happy to, if you want.
Might I withdraw my motion? And I would, well, I would withdraw my motion if that's acceptable.
Yes, that's acceptable.
Okay. And then I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda of F1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, excluding item 3, would be my motion at this point in time. So we are not going to vote on F3 at this time under the consent agenda. It would be my motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items except for F3. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would also move that F3 be moved to G5 to be discussed along with G4, the adoption or the decision on the FY13 Cabarrus County Budget and Public Hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And when that, when F3 comes up, I would ask for someone to give us an understanding about what is a service provider. I don't want it now, but I'd like to have it later to be able to explain what a service provider is.
And I'll add to that. I'd like, I know there's been some lengthy explanations that have been done throughout the community for what's going on, and I'd like, if possible, county manager to explain one more time so the people watching back television that are not aware of what the issue is can understand the full breadth of what's occurring.
And we will do that under new business.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have new business, and the first thing we have is Department of Transportation, Rural Operating Assistance Program, rope funding and public hearing. Bob, Bob is here. You going to give an introduction and then we'll call for the public hearing? Is that right?
Yes, my name is Bob Bushy. I'm the transportation coordinator with Cabarrus County. We're here to hold our public hearing for our annual rope grant from the state of North Carolina, which provides funding for elderly and handicapped transportation, employment transportation, and the rural general public transportation. And this year, we are receiving funding in the amount of $210,781.
At this time, I will open a public hearing concerning the Rural Operating Assistance Program, also known as rope funding. Is there anyone here to speak for or against the rope funding? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions concerning the funding for this program?
I move that we approve the, adopt the 2013 Rural Operating Assistance Program certified statement.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have EDC, Ryan McDaniels.
Yes, thank you. As you know, we did have a public hearing called for tonight. There's been a substantial change in the nature of the project, and because of that, we would ask to postpone the public hearing to a later date.
So at this time, I would take a motion to remove this item from the agenda.
I'd make a motion to remove this item from the agenda and reset it at a convenient date for the EDC, once the project becomes back on the hopper, I guess.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next up, Finance, QSCB reallocation request for Concord High School. There you are, Mr. Whitkey. I didn't know if you could be at two places at one time. Welcome. Glad that you're here.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to appear before you. The county school board is requesting $85,000 be reallocated from a chiller replacement project at Concord High School to the dining room expansion project at the same school. Per the school board, the chiller replacement project bids came in significantly under budget. The funds are needed to purchase new furniture for the dining room, which, because of its enlargement and also because of the age of the existing furniture, needs to be replaced and new furniture added. The school does not have enough furniture to fill the existing, to fill the additional expanded space. The reallocation of funds will be discussed with, before you today. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? We did discuss this at our work session.
I'm asking, well, and I wasn't, we were at the work session, so I guess I have a question, and I, let me ask this, and it may appear to be kind of a trite question to ask, but some people will think, well, I asked this question, I'm sure in the public, because I know that, you know, there always are two different budgets, but was there not any planning that went into how much, how many furnishings would be needed for the expanded cafeteria when it was first thought of and designed? I know that's probably predates your arrival at various kinds of schools, but.
It does, Mr. Carruth. But to answer your question, Commissioner, the initial planning directions that we received from the federal government, from DPI, Department of Public Construction, was to exclude furniture, but there was a later decision made, and this was confirmed by our bond counsel through county finance department, that the, it was now allowed as long as the furnishings were part and parcel to the operation of the space. So in other words, dining room furniture was specifically mentioned in the memo, auditorium furnishings, things that would inherently be needed in that particular area. What is not allowed any longer is, for example, if we're doing the dining room, we can't buy furniture for the gymnasium, or we can't buy furniture for the office of the school. It has to be specifically for the space involved.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve the reallocation request. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have discussions about. Okay, next, we have discussions about the budget. The first thing that I would like to talk about tonight because, um, is, let me find it. It is on page 348 of your agenda, which is the fire tax item. You'll see that that was added for information on the, the fire tax. I received a, if you'll remember, I think, Commissioner Meesmer, I think you missed that particular meeting when we talked about the fire taxes. You've got the ordinance in there. Midland, Mount Pleasant, and Harrisburg have areas in their fire tax that are both within their city limits and also outside of their city limits. And so when we had our discussions with them, it was very important for us to know what their town councils were gonna do in order for us to know what to do. I can report to you that Midland has approved their budget, Mount Pleasant has approved their budget. Harrisburg is meeting currently in discussing, discussing their budget, and they will not approve their budget until next Monday, the 25th. So we have the request from them. We do need to approve the ordinance for the fire tax before the end of the month. So we have a choice tonight to approve what you have presented to you. It's the request that we received from each of the fire departments. Of course, if there is a, depending on what emotion that may come up tonight, that any of those could change if they needed to, or they can stand like they are if there's such a motion. The other option would be that we would need to, if you, we wanted to wait until after Harrisburg meets, we could meet next week. We would have to meet, we can't meet on Monday. We would be able to meet, I would propose Wednesday at 4:00 for us to just talk about the fire tax and that ordinance if there isn't a consensus, or is it, if there isn't a motion and a vote tonight on what to approve. So at this time, because this is the first opportunity we've really had with all of us to talk about the fire tax, I'd like to open it up to discussion among the commissioners as to what you think about the fire tax.
I think we'll do them all at one time.
Oh, we would do an ordinance at one time to cover all of them. That's true. So you're okay with the request?
To vote on all of them at one time?
The request that we have in the ordinance. Yes, to vote on all of them at one time, but with their request.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner White?
That's fine with me. I'm, uh, I cannot meet... That's fine with me. I just cannot meet next Wednesday before at least 6:00 because I've got a couple of trials.
Commissioner Caruth? Commissioner Meesmer, any comments?
I'm, I'm fine with waiting. If we need to move the time, that's fine, but I think it should all be done at once.
Are you okay with the proposal? Okay, that we've received from them? Okay. Commissioner Caruth?
Yeah, I have no problem waiting until next week. And if it's 6:00 is earliest, that's fine as well. On Wednesday.
If someone wants to talk to the judge, I can be here earlier, but...
I was trying to find a time next week. I mean, if we have a motion tonight, then we don't have to worry about next week. I mean, that's what it boils down to, if we don't have a motion tonight. We had discussed, looking at the agenda, or looking at the calendar for next week, I'm sorry, let me back up. Monday is when they meet, so Monday is out. So we had Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, presuming that you don't want to meet on Friday. Commissioner Caruth is out of town starting late on Wednesday. So that pretty much knocked out Thursday and Friday for him. I have a 5:30 meeting in Salisbury with the NPO on Wednesday. I can be late to that if I need be.
How about Wednesday morning?
That's okay.
I mean, I don't know what schedule, I'm talking about, it's easier for me to work around my schedule in the morning.
I have to be at work at 7:15.
Okay.
I can meet at 6:00.
What happened to Tuesday?
Tuesday...
I've got...
Oh, you got court on Tuesday?
Well, I've got court every day, but...
Oh, okay. Just tell the judge you're not gonna be there.
Okay, and again, if there's a motion tonight, we don't have to worry about next week. So that's up to everybody if you want to, if somebody wants to make a motion, second it, we can, we can make a movement.
Madam Chair, isn't the issue that, on the fire tax, is that we, what the Fire Department has proposed for the Fire District is...
For Harrisburg.
For Harrisburg, is 11 cents, and we're waiting to hear whether or not the town of Harrisburg is going to match that or come in somewhere underneath that. And I think that's what, and that's the question, if we, do we feel comfortable approving it tonight, knowing that we may actually be, the folks outside the town of Harrisburg maybe have a higher fire tax than the folks inside the town limits?
And I will tell you that I did...
Last year was just the opposite.
Right. I did receive a message from the mayor of Harrisburg, who said he felt like they would approve what they requested us to approve. He felt like their town council would approve, but of course, he can't say that because they haven't voted yet.
And he doesn't vote.
And he doesn't vote, except for in a tie. So it's up to the commissioners if anyone would like to make a motion to approve the ordinance as it's presented, or if somebody would like to make a motion that we meet next week. We would have to, not next week, but... Right. Oh, we have to do a public hearing before we can do any of the votes. I'm sorry. I have gotten ahead of myself. I apologize. Okay, well, let's hold on to that. So I, I, for some reason, I kept thinking we'd already had a public hearing on the budget, so I apologize. So we need to start with a public hearing.
Yeah, I think we got a few people that wanted to talk about public hearing.
That's true. I was jumping right in because I knew this was separate from, I was looking at the main budget, so my apologies. I'm used to Commissioner White doing this part of the meeting. Okay, let's back up. Is Erica here? Is she gonna do, you gonna do a presentation? Or anything for us?
Well, I can just briefly update the public on where we are in the budget process. Madam Chair, members of the board, on, by July 1st, each year, the board is required to adopt a budget ordinance with appropriations and a tax levy that is sufficient and proper for the operations of the county. On May 21st, the county manager presented his recommended budget, and there were subsequent budget workshops that were held, and the budget was modified accordingly. You have before you in your agenda packet the three ordinances. You spoke about the fire tax ordinance. I won't speak about that again. The capital improvement project ordinance is as originally presented, and the last ordinance includes the county's general fund budget, which includes the general fund budget of $200,267,199 in revenues and expenditures based on a tax rate of 70 cents per $100 of assessed property values. This ordinance also includes four other annual funds, which are the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center Fund at $1,587,884, the landfill fund at $1,148,000, the 911 emergency telephone fund at $686,674, and the health insurance fund at $7,719,102, for a total, for a total ordinance of all the annual funds of $211,408,859. At this time or after the public hearing, we'll be glad to address any questions that you may have regarding the budget.
Okay, thank you. I apologize. I was, I just knew that was at the end, and I was trying to bring it back in, into the beginning of it, so my apologies. At this time, we do need to call for a public hearing. Okay. I will, they should be able... Okay, okay. I, I talk loudly. That's a good or bad thing. I don't know. We will take care of that, sir. So at this time, I would call for a public hearing for Cabarrus County's budget. The problem's gonna be they're gonna turn up mine too, and I already talk loud. Anyway, we'll, we'll get through all that, though. Okay. I have a number of cards to speak concerning the budget, and we are gonna start with Bishop Jordan. There you are. I knew I saw you. If you will make sure, if you are speaking, the microphone does move, so if you'll adjust the microphone to make sure that it, it does pick you up.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Chairman and members of the board and all the citizens here. I come before you tonight. First of all, my name is Roland Jordan, Bishop, All People Church of God in Jesus Christ, civil rights man. And my job is to take care of the devil. But I'm not calling nobody the devil. I'm just doing what I say is the master. Okay, tonight, I stand here for the senior citizen. Mr. Ben from the Social Service, good friend of mine. One thing I say when I call upon him, he'll act fast and taking care of problems. Ms. Lena Strong's a good friend of mine, Recreation Department. But our senior citizens have found a home on Corbin Street, and they would like for that to maintain by the Recreation Department. And y'all elected by your, your people, and your people here tonight to let you know they're for the senior citizen building. And, uh, we thank, we hope y'all take it in consideration. Now, I'm for changes, for the best. So whatever decision y'all make, you know, it's in your hands. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Nelson Lee.
Thank you for letting me speak here. I'm a citizen of Cabarrus County, have been for all but six months of my life. I lived in Mecklenburg County unfortunately for six months. I'm very verbal in the county. Some of you may not know me, but the ones that do, Mr. Caruth knows I'm very verbal. I represent the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 909. We operate out of the Senior Center. We have for 10 years. July will be our 10th year there. We've had very, very good service for them, no problems, nothing. Usually, you don't go through a 10-year period not having problems with some organization. And back to the old thing, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I'm not here to bash DSS, but at the same time, when you read the newspapers, you don't get good vibes from the DSS. They're always over, overworked and don't have enough people to do what they need to do. So I would ask that you not combine them in any way, and don't tell me that, oh, they're not gonna have anything. DSS won't have anything to do with it. You combine them somehow, and it'll eventually end up in their hands. Now, we all know, and I hate to say politicians, but when politicians tell you anything, look at the opposite. So I, I thank you for your time here, but I would ask that you not approve that change. You've got a good thing going. Don't break it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dee Vernon. Dee? No, you're fine.
Well, again, my name is Dee Vernon. I was born on South Main Street in Kannapolis at home, and proud to say that. This is a wonderful county, and it's a wonderful towns and cities in Cabarrus County. I'm wondering what, at what we're, you're gonna be voting on tonight is really even legal, because there's a bill in the Senate called the 438 Bill, and it's voting on the human services consolidation. So let's be sure that that's gonna be legal, and I hope it's not. Because we love the Senior Center. You know, I said before, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And so, please, please, listen to your people that put you in office, because again, November's coming up pretty soon. So, um, at our first meeting, that, that we even knew anything about this was last month. And the city ma, I mean, the county manager came and met with the seniors at the Senior Center. He said this was in planning for two years. If we'd have had two years to get petitions, we'd have had a lot, thousands of petitions, because I can believe you. Every one I talked to is against this. I think, I think there was three people that, that didn't want to sign the petition, but only because they didn't want to give their address and phone number. And, um, so you, you also need to know that Parks and Rec will be taking over our Senior Center. Parks and Parks will. And, and also, if it's not a done deal, you know, Liz, you told us, I'm sorry, Commissioner Poole, you told us that this was not a done deal. But it seems like the way y'all were talking tonight, said, when they do this and when they do that, it sounds like it is a done deal, and we hope that it's not. We hope that, that y'all won't be influenced, that you'll vote in, in the way that you're, that the people who put you in office, and it was us. The seniors, you can count it, seniors vote more than any other age group. And that's, you know, that's sad, but it's true. Let's see, what else I got written down here? I've got so much that I want to say. I saw the meeting on, on, on television on June the 4th. I've been watching. I've been trying to come to the meeting. But anyway, Mr. Rose made a statement that he, that you're gonna put them all the services under the same umbrella. Well, I'm afraid the ser, the senior citizens are going to get wet and cold under that umbrella. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Young? Annette Young? She's come.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairperson, I'm sorry, and other commission members. My name is Annette Toles Young. I'm serving currently as President of the Cabarrus County Council on Aging, and I'm also a member of the Advisory Board. I'm relatively new, almost five years here in Cabarrus County. Came here and got heavily involved in the Senior Center. Actually, wrote an article in a first edition of the year of the Sunset Outlook about how I thought senior centers were not for me, that I wasn't old enough for those, and that's because I didn't know what they do. Since I've been there, I've volunteered, I've gotten to meet people, and I've gotten to find out what kinds of programs are offered. And one of the things that I do is I volunteer as a SHIP counselor. SHIP stands for Senior Health Insurance Information Program. And that means you're counseling individuals who are Medicare recipients either because of age or because they qualify because of disabilities. One of the wonderful things that I have been able to do is to refer people who are new to our state to the activities and programs that are right there in the same building. And I have actually seen those people participate in lunch and learn and other activities, senior games and the like. I have a little saying. It's my saying. Maybe I read it somewhere and I just copied it. I don't know. But my saying is this. Some things are right, and some things just aren't. In other words, it is what it is, and it is not what it's not. A senior center that has services in one place and has programs in another is really not that convenient for seniors. I absolutely get, however, the need for services to be combined. I do. I had a personal experience just this past month preceding the death of one of my brothers in Georgia. When my niece from Georgia called me, asking me, what can we do? We don't have anywhere to place him. The hospital, social worker was of no help. They didn't know what senior centers did. They didn't know what kind of services senior centers offered to those who are caregivers. It was horrible. He passed away, and I think that has caused me to have a deeper grief that I actually had at the loss of my parents and my husband. Because I know from what I've been able to learn here in Cabarrus County, a great senior center that has social workers and others who can address the needs of senior citizens in one place, that is very, very helpful. Another thing I want you to be aware of, as I counsel people with SHIP, and I meet these individuals who are from other states, I'm kinda nosy. So I ask, why did you come here to Cabarrus County? Why did you move to North Carolina? Guess what a lot of them say? We like it here. We came here for a visit. We visited our children. A lot of seniors are moving here. So what does that mean? Why would I bring that up?
And I hate to interrupt you, but I need you to wrap it up, just to be fair to everybody.
Okay. I bring that up because you are attractive as a county to senior citizens. A great senior center program will continue to attract people. And I go back to the first thing I said. It is what it is, it's not what it's not. If there are issues related to the budget where it needs to be streamlined... If there are issues related to the budget where it needs to be streamlined, let's do that. I think some people may be going to suggest tonight that we kind of table this and kind of look at it. And if you get together some senior citizens, they'll help look at this. Again, thank you for your time, and if I'm over my three minutes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Donna Brazina. Donna? If you could pull that microphone down if you need to. I know, you're tall enough, you might need to.
I'm tall.
Can you pronounce your last name for me?
Brazina.
That was good.
I'm here for, just like everybody else. I started coming to the Senior Center in January of this year, and I've known about it for about three or four years, and I had a stigma. I'm not old, you know, so why am I partaking with the Senior Citizen Center? I am. My heart isn't. And since I have been coming here, I just sold my house from Harrisburg, and I'm moving two blocks from the Senior Center, so I can partake more and participate. I helped in the Senior Games, won medals. I've never won medals in my life. It was wonderful. We need our Senior Citizen Center. I have seen these people come in that can't do anything else but be a part of that Senior Center. And they're vibrant. I see some that are a lot older than me, that I hope I'm the, I'm the way they are when I get to that age. I'm asking the same as she asked and everybody else asked. Please leave our facility alone. Do not put us with Parks and Recreation. Do not put us with Department of Social Services, because you know, as we know, as everybody has said, eventually things will start leaking in. I love children. I have three. I love grandchildren. But that's our center. That's all ours. If we want to take our grandchildren over there to visit, we can do that. But it's our center. We're very, very protective of it. It's like a child to all of us. Please leave it where it is for the length of eternity. Do not take it anywhere. Do not put it with anybody. Leave it as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Dorothy Skoka. Dorothy? And I may have mispronounced your last name. Yes. I'm happy. You pull that down.
That was perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to have too, too much to say, be a little repetitive. My husband and I moved here from Long Island a little over six years ago. It's a one, it was a wonderful choice we made. We have absolutely no regrets. I'm quite active with my church. I'm active with the seniors. It's a wonderful, wonderful facility. It helps people mentally as well as physically. And I've never seen so many young senior citizens until you get involved. I just, one example, and one of the classes I take is Zumba. And I stand next to an 84-year-old little lady, and she puts me to shame, because I have to sit down. She stands all the time. She and her husband do square dancing, and they go, and it, to me, it's just physically and mentally so wonderful for a person our age to enjoy. And I can only say, just please, if it's not broken, don't fix it. That's all I can say. It's a wonderful, wonderful place.
Thank you. Okay, next, I have Ann Eves. Ann Eves? There you are.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Eves, and I am a retired school teacher from Cabarrus County. I am also on the Department of Aging Advisory Board, which you all appointed me to. I come to you this evening to respectfully request that you consider carefully the proposed changes in the new budget as it relates to the Department of Aging. As I understand it, the Department of Aging will no longer exist in this new budget. Yes, the services and programming will continue, but as any division does, it will weaken these programs and these services, because they will come under DSS and they will come under Parks and Rec. 10,000 baby boomers are turning 60 every day in the United States. Instead of weakening services for them, it is now a need to provide adequate planning to meet the needs of these people. The Department of Aging now, as it now exists, is prepared and accustomed to doing this well. In the Department of Aging, in addition to the staff, there were 149 documented volunteers last year. These volunteers provided 12,895 and 45 hundreds, that's decimal four five, hours of free labor in the Department of Aging. The documented volunteers saved Cabarrus County 261,132 dollars and 86 cents in salary and benefits. This is according to salary at $20, 25 cents per hour, that's salary and benefits. There were also undocumented volunteers who didn't sign in, who don't sign in, who probably provided even more savings for the county. Many of these volunteers will not be able or willing to provide these free services in Kannapolis. Therefore, new volunteers or paid employees will have to be secured with, with assets provided for recruiting and training of these new volunteers or these new employees. In less than a week, since this act, we found about this action has been kept quiet until last month, as we said, we started a petition, which Ms. Poole has, and there are 813 citizens who signed this petition to ask that the Department of Aging, as it exists now, continue. I respectfully request that you reject the proposed changes to the Department of Aging in the new budget, or at least postpone the changes until a complete study can be done on the effects the changes will have monetarily and in providing services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The commissioners, I do have, I do have the petition, which I've passed this way, and we'll be getting it over to you guys, too. Okay, next, I have Ted Drain.
I'm Ted Drain, I'm a member of the Department of Aging Advisory Board. I'm also the Cabarrus delegate to the senior Tar Heel Legislature. On behalf of senior citizens in Cabarrus County, I'm asking you to delay the implementation of any changes until July 1, 2013. In the meantime, I would ask that you create regional focus groups at the Lunch Plus sites, at the Senior Centers, Mount Pleasant, because to my knowledge, only one focus group has been held, input group, and that was at the Senior Center on Corbin. Seniors need to have a better understanding of what's going on. They need to have ownership to the plans and the changes. I would ask that you also, as you make plans for any sort of change, that you clarify in written policy the role and duties of the Aging Advisory Board or Council. That you also clarify in a policy how the Senior Center trust funds can and will be used. And I would also ask that you conduct a senior satisfaction survey to get input from seniors as to what their needs are as we look at that July 1, 2013 date. I would ask that you review the letter that the county manager and the chairperson has received from Dennis Street, who is the director of the Division of Aging and Adult Services with the Department, with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. I would like to close by saying to you that if this has been in the works for two years, one more year won't hurt.
Next, I have Barbara Burridge.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I am Barbara Burridge. There's not much I can add to all these wonderful people's statements, except I would say, amen, ditto, and let's go for it. These seniors deserve respect, honor, and our veterans. Mr. Lee, I agree with you. I had, was privileged to visit one night down there with the veterans, and I was very humbled and awed by what I saw and experienced. Now, we need to stop playing around with the money that this county has and that these people have paid all their lives. Now, we talk about in your mission statements, it's something about visions, goals, leaving a future. These people have made our future. Now, what are we going to do to them? Just throw them away? I don't think so. There's enough of them, like I said, November's coming, look out, baby. Everybody's going to be affected by this. And they deserve to be treated with the greatest of kindness in anything, and they've been nothing but respectful tonight, informed, kind, generous. This is the kind of people we want in our communities. We do not want people, and we don't wait until they get in a nursing home and they can't talk, okay? Stimulate them. Let them do these activities. Let them do them in their own place, which they bought and understand and paid for, and they're willing to fund, and keep it up. And I agree with Mr. Lee, I was Mr. Lee about the DSS. Not picking on you, Ben, or anybody like that. I've had a lot of experience, just one of the past 30 days, could not get, I am a volunteer. Volunteers work for nothing, right? But our work is worth something. As a CFT PPAT, I'll tell you what it is later. And I went over two times with two appointments set, and I sat in that room, waiting room, an hour and a half, no assistance from anybody. I had to keep asking them, where was my social worker that I was supposed to meet with on cases that I was asked to be a volunteer to this day? Oh, we're sorry. They had to reschedule last minute. One hour and 45 minutes, they knew I was in that waiting room. I'm a volunteer. I drove that distance up there. No excuse for that. Now, if you throw our senior citizens, or lump them, or merge them, whatever you want to call this tragedy, put them up there, they'll never be seen or heard from again. And just remember, they are the biggest voters in Cabarrus County. And I hope not only commissioners, I hope they'll consider everybody else they're voting for, too. Because I would gladly go pick up any of them in my car and take them to vote. Thank you.
Okay, Jason, I know Jason's here. There you are. I'm sorry, I couldn't find you for a minute.
Commissioners, I'm Jason Osterich. I'm here to talk tonight about just how it's become commonplace for all of our politicians to just lie about all of our expenditures and continue to increase taxes and just continue to go along, come along, because nobody holds them accountable. And I want to talk about all the different lies that have been told in regard to this budget. And it's really, I mean, it's terrible. At the April 18, 2011 meeting, the board unanimously approved a resolution supporting a 1/4 cent sales tax increase. The resolution stated, whereas if the proposed 1/4 cent sales tax levy does not pass, then an equivalent property tax rate increase of 2.2 cents would be required. Essentially, the resolution stated that if the residents do not vote for the sales tax, the board will raise the property tax by 2.2 cents. The residents did vote for the sales tax, and the board's going to raise the sales tax 7 cents anyway. That's a lie. Second thing I've been told, Commissioner Poole, with all due respect, I've been told several times that this 7-cent tax increase is not a tax increase, that we're going from 63 cents to 70 cents, and that's not a tax increase. That doesn't pass the smell test. If I had a job and I made $50,000, and I paid a tax rate on that and paid a certain amount of taxes, and the next year I made $40,000, the IRS wouldn't come to me and say, you owe exactly what you paid us last year. I would pay tax on $40,000, which is what I owe the county. The Independent Tribune actually looked at this issue, and they did analysis of it and said that under the current tax rate on a $200,000 house, an individual would pay $1,260. And at the new tax rate, they'd pay $1,400. That's $140 more in taxes that somebody will have to pay next year. Moreover, the tax rate is applied to personal property and motor vehicles in addition to real property. Those items were not revalued downward, so each citizen will have a tax increase for all of those items. In fact, the proposed budget explicitly acknowledges this tax increase on page 12, where it states, valuations for motor vehicles have increased, therefore motor vehicle taxes have been budgeted at 16.4% increase from FY 2012, emitted budget at approximately $8 million. The third lie had just come, just blatantly in a campaign. While running for state office, Commissioner White said, working families never get a break. Government continues to take more and more of our money, leaving less for us on food, clothing, and even the gas we need just to get to work. I'm Jay White, and it's time for conservatives to fight back. His representation that he would be a tax cutter is a lie. Commissioner White has done nothing but raise taxes. Commissioner White voted to support the sales tax increase. He voted for the recent property valuation, which overvalued property. In order to retain tax revenues, Commissioner White will likely be the deciding vote tonight. Commissioner White, I can use $140 for my family, for food, clothing, and the gas I need to get to work. Are you going to help us fight back, or are you going to lead the way? Because you're going to be the deciding vote tonight on this budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the yellow cards that I have, that I held out for the public hearing for the budget. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak for or against the budget? For or against the budget? Okay, just as long as we, you had your time earlier for the other item, so I just want to make sure this is about the budget itself.
I understand because you said if there's anyone else who wants to speak.
No, that's fine, as long as it's about the budget.
There's no ambiguity, it's about the budget.
Good, thank you.
I'm a little bit lost about the budget. Would you please help me understand the for and against? I mean, I'm not a politician, I'm just a painter. And I'm here tonight to try to understand, really, what you mean by for and against, because the whole time I've listened, I've been on the side of the for, but I want to make sure I'm on the right side. Can somebody help me here?
Whenever you have a public hearing, that's, that's what we say, you can speak for or against the budget.
Okay.
Most people, if they're neutral, they don't come up and speak.
Okay, well, I'm not neutral.
Anything that you want to tell us about our budget?
Okay. I'm for the budget if it makes sense. And so far, I don't understand the sense. I really don't. I, like I said, like I said, I liken to the Constitution. It's for common people like me. I'm common. And it's the same deal up here. I'm just a commoner. I'm not, I'm not a learned scholar, politician, or lawyer. I mean, I just, I'm just a common person.
We've had the, the budgets have been available here for anyone that wanted to come look at the budget. So are there certain items about the budget that you have a question about? Because that's what we're here for tonight.
Aren't we, isn't this about the raising of taxes?
This is about the county's budget. We are required by law to have a budget in place by July the 1st, before July the 1st.
Well, does it have anything to do with raising taxes?
It has to do with setting a property tax rate.
Okay, does that mean you're going to raise taxes? Because if you are, I'm against it.
It depends. I don't know what your house is valued at.
Again, I'm just a painter.
No, I understand. I don't know what your house is valued at, so I can't answer that question to you.
I'm trash, it's valued about maybe 1,800.
Then you might save money, I don't know. But I can't talk to you individually, sir.
Okay, well, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the room that has not spoken so far about the budget that would still like to speak? Okay, hearing none, I will now close the public hearing for the budget. Okay, and again, I apologize, commissioners, for jumping ahead. If you will, let's go back to the fire tax and talk about that one first. Is there questions, comments, a motion that has to do... Is there questions, comments, a motion that has to do with the ordinance for the fire tax?
I'd be reluctant to vote unless we do a revenue-neutral for Harrisburg, not knowing what they're going to do. I don't think it's fair to the citizens that live in the county to have a different tax rate than what the city may impose, and we don't know that that's going to be done until tonight. So if there's a way we can parcel it out, that's one way. I know there's a few of the fire chiefs I've seen at least pull into the parking lot. I see a couple of them here tonight. I think they need to have a decision, or they should have a decision, as it relates to at least those. So if we can parcel it out, that's fine. I'm not confident that we can do that, but I'm comfortable with, at least right now, going forward with revenue-neutral as it relates to Harrisburg, not knowing what that decision's going to be, because I know they presented that, or at least they presented at least that.
I would feel a little bit more comfortable waiting to decide all in one night. Just, you know, that way, we think that'd be the more conservative approach and the safer way to go with the town of Harrisburg and make certain that they'll, you know, come through the way we think, but...
Madam Chair, well, Madam Chair, I just got a text from Mayor Hagler, or Hagler, excuse me, that says, "My counsel still supports the .11 fire district tax. Anything else you need, let me know."
I just got the same one. I just didn't know it. Okay. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Commissioner Burridge, I thought you... I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought you were going to say something.
This is voted on separate from the budget, correct?
Yes, this is the fire tax ordinance, which is page 348 in your agenda. Mr. Caruth?
Yeah, I had thought about something earlier, and I didn't know, and I've talked to Mr. Downs about it earlier today, and I know Madam Chairman talked to you as well about it, was that could we, and it was just an idea, that if we want to go ahead and vote on it tonight, and we approve the request from Harrisburg, and then they came back, the town council, and approved something less, so it was not an equivalent collection, that I know that there was mention from the Harrisburg officials that there was eventual plans to build a third fire station out in the rural part of the district. Can we reserve, only disperse the monies? Do we have to disperse 100% of the tax revenue? Or can we give the equivalent tax revenue, put the rest in reserve to be held eventually for use to build a new fire station and hold that in reserve? I know in the past, we have, we've not gone that far, but we have actually have provided an interest-free loan to both Midland as well as Odell to build a new fire station. And so it would not be unprecedented that we do something along the lines of even reserving, putting it in the capital reserve. So we understand what you're saying. In other words, if Harrisburg comes back, rather than 11 cents, they go to 6 cents, we would take 5 cents of that revenue, worth of revenue, and put it and bank it in our capital reserve fund that would be designated for the Harrisburg Fire District, whenever the town of Harrisburg then came up with a matching funds that would be used to fund the construction of a fire facility. So that's the only thing I have to offer. Other than that, I'm prepared to wait myself. I think we need to wait until we're for sure, rather than taking the risk that it not be approved.
Okay. Commissioner Burridge, I just asked to make sure of what your preference was, to do something tonight or wait, and you said...
I make a motion, we wait.
Okay. Let's, when can we meet? When can everybody meet? Because we need to go ahead and determine the time that we're going to meet.
I can meet anytime on Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay. So he's got Tuesday or Wednesday.
You want to be Tuesday morning?
I have to be at work at 7:15. You have to be at work early, too, usually, but I have to be at work at 7:15, if you want me there.
You don't leave before that?
I'm used to being at work early. I don't have a problem being before that.
Six o'clock Monday, Tuesday morning.
I mean, I don't think it's going to take very long.
On Tuesday, I can meet at 5:00, if we're in and out.
AM or PM?
PM.
I'm just checking.
Yes.
I'm just checking. Now, I don't really want to meet at 5:00 AM. I'll tell you that much.
5:00 is fine with me.
Tuesday, you said at 5:00? Can you meet Tuesday at 5:00? Can you meet Tuesday at 5:00? Okay. Then we will meet, when we finish tonight, we will adjourn, we will recess it, sorry. We will recess it to Tuesday, that's the 26th, the 26th at 5:00 PM. And we will presume that Harrisburg Town Council will, in fact, approve some budget on the 25th. Okay. Okay. The next item, sorry, let me get back in my agenda correctly. That's the problem. I try to go ahead from the agenda, and then I get myself out of order. Okay, the next item we have is the Capital Improvements Project Budget Ordinance, and that begins on page 253 of your agenda. So commissioners, any discussion about the Capital Improvements Budget Ordinance? Or does anyone have a motion that they would like to propose?
And I want to point out, and I'll make the motion that we approve the Capital Improvements Project Budget Ordinance, and people to understand as well that on the Capital Improvement Project Budget is separate from the general fund, and involves those things that we do for construction or major equipment replacements, such as air conditioners, roofs, things like that accord.
Okay, so you made a motion to approve? Okay, I have a motion to approve the Budget Ordinance for Capital Improvements Project. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that budget passes. Okay. And now, we come to what's page 256 in your agenda, which is the Budget Ordinance for the General Fund. And commissioners, I don't know how you want to proceed, if you want to... I made a copy of this just because I wasn't certain if everybody had it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Point of order, if I could. Are we, if we're going to have a discussion about the reorganization of the senior center, would we, in effect, be approving that reorganization if we approve the budget? And should we not talk about that first and decide, make sure we're okay on that before we...
However you want to approach the budget, we can look at the different areas. There are obviously areas in addition to that area, in case there are any concerns from the commissioners. I don't know, I haven't had individual discussions with anybody to know what thoughts about the budget. So however you want to proceed, if you want to talk about the Department of Aging, if you want to talk about public safety, human services, any of those areas, it's open for whoever would like to take the microphone.
One thing I wanted to tell everybody, or to respond to Mrs. Vernon, Mrs. Vernon made a comment or a question that the House Bill, I think she said House Bill 438, can everybody hear me? Okay. Mrs. Vernon was asking about House Bill 438 and the human services consolidation. It is my understanding, the last time I checked that bill, is that Cabarrus County was exempted from that bill. So we, Cabarrus County does not apply to that bill, and that was confirmed as late as Friday, and so just to let you know about that. So that Cabarrus County is not in that bill, and that is a bill to consolidate the Department of Social Services, or have the ability to consolidate Department of Social Services with the Health Alliance. Okay? So I wanted to address that. Mr. Downs, I wanted to, we have heard a couple of things tonight, is that this is the first that the Department of Aging has heard about this consolidation of services or shift of services. Can you please address that concern?
On the staff level and the board level, we have discussed the creation or the organization of a human services department, where we would create a location for a one-stop shop for services, whether it's social services, transportation services, aging services. We've talked about it for two years. The staff, the department heads from the Department of Aging, the Department of Transportation, and Department of DSS have all three met for over a year, creating the plan to do this. It was about four months ago. At that time, the original plan was to move more than half of the staff of aging to the Human Services Building. I looked at that. I didn't feel that that was necessary. I thought it was a better plan to only move services and leave programs where they were. In fact, the original plan had set forth to move Mr. Murphy as well to Kannapolis. So that's been being planned for over a year with the staff level. So as far as, if you didn't know about it, I apologize that it wasn't trickling down, but it has, ever since we have made the decision to bring the Parks Department into it, that's when we came to you and started talking to you. We tried to set the meeting a little earlier, but schedules didn't permit, so we did meet actually two weeks earlier than the original plan date was. And we met, and we stayed as long as you wanted to talk, and we were willing to come back any other times you thought was necessary. In fact, a few of you did come by the office and talk or call on the phone, and that was very few. So we didn't have any further discussions. So Commissioner White, does that answer your question?
Okay. Next thing, or I don't know if anybody has a question based on that. Okay, next one is the programs, is what programs are going to be cut from the senior center?
There will be no programs cut from the senior center. It will still be a senior center. The sign will not change out front. It will be Cabarrus County Senior Center. The other programs that take place organization-wise there, but go to other locations, such as senior games, the Christmas party, the Health and Wellness Day, none of those were changed. They were never intended to change, and the only change that you will see at the senior center will be the five ladies that perform your services, or some of your services, will move to Kannapolis, and there will be the Director of Parks, two secretary positions, and then one park programmer, who, once we build the park in Midland, will actually relocate to that location as well, because he's going to be in charge of the Midland Park. They are park employees, and they will be, Ms. Strong will be the head of the department, and Mr. Murphy will fold in under as the park superintendent. He will also still be in charge. He will be working with the parks as well as the senior center. And then there will be a program manager that will supervise the staff on a daily basis. They will not be programming parks activities in the senior center unless it is agreed upon by the program managers from aging and the parks. That was never intended. This is office-based for Ms. Strong and the two secretaries and the program manager that operates with the parks. And again, that hopefully is a temporary location for that individual, so once we get that park up and running, he will move out of that office and into the park. That is the only thing that you're going to see different in the senior center than what you see right now, is there's going to be three new employees or four new employees there.
Is there any follow-up with that? Because I've got some more questions. I just don't want to cut anybody off if there are...
I guess my question is, is that what the park and rec employees that are there, what will they be doing? Will there be any plans to move any type of programs, park and rec programs, into the senior center, other than what's already there?
No, sir. The parks employee, again, Ms. Strong, she will oversee the parks. We're talking parks and recreation. We're talking parks and active living. We're not sure. We're waiting on Ms. Strong and Mr. Murphy to get feedback and to see what that new title should be. But that is it. Only the administration, there are no programs that will be moved there that are not already there.
Who's going to be in charge of the senior center?
The Director of the Department would be Ms. Strong. She will have the most, she will have the highest level before it comes to county management. Underneath that will be Mike Murphy, who is, he will be, again, he will be overseeing all of the park managers, as well as the manager of the senior center, and Susan Donaldson, who is a program manager currently there, has been there quite a while, will be overseeing the staff on a daily basis at the senior center.
But the senior center will be in the Parks Department?
The senior programs and the senior center, yes, sir. It will be under the parks and recreation, or parks and active living. That is the other number, the other name that has been recommended by Ms. Strong and Mr. Murphy, and we're deciding on what that actual name should be.
I think that was the majority of the complaints here tonight, wasn't it?
I'm not sure that Ms. Strong was going to supervise, oversee the department?
No, that was going in the parks.
Is it going to lose its voice by moving under the division or the Department of Parks?
No, sir. The council, or the Aging Advisory Council, they will not change. They will still have the same makeup as they've always had. That's what I've said before. In fact, we would, our intention, it's not in writing yet, but our intention is for the chairman of that board to actually have a spot on the Parks Board as well, so that they don't have currently. They don't have a say-so in all the recreational activities in the county. So that would allow them to have a spot on the Parks Board as well.
I don't think they really want it.
Let me ask you this also, when you're talking about moving some services out to the Department of Services, will the ladies or the men that help the seniors in regards to services still have time that they're going to be at the senior center? Or are they going to completely be devoid of the senior center?
Make sure I got your question right. Yes, the ladies that will be moving to human services, they will also have certain hours during every week that they will be, they will still have, be able to come back to the senior center on Corbin Avenue, as well as in Mount Pleasant. So there will be set hours. Those schedules will be posted in the Sunset Outlook. Everybody that gets that publication will know when those hours are met, and then they will also have hours in the Human Services Center. In fact, some of those already don't, while they have an office in the senior center, they're not there all the time. They're out at the meal sites and other locations as well. And it'll be the same procedures as before. They would just have their home office will be in the senior, or in the Human Services Center. There will also be opportunities for other social workers to come down and have hours in the building as well, that would provide services that may be needed by the senior citizens.
With, if this move is approved tonight, what savings would the county, what would be the savings? May not be a dollar amount, but what would be the realized savings?
Well, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but there would be a savings of a reduction in staff, both from aging, transportation, and from social services. And then also some staff will also be re-tasked or given new responsibilities to broaden their scopes in order to hand some of the programs.
How many staff members are going to be reduced?
I believe it's one full-time employee and three part-time employees in the Department of Aging, one full-time employee from the Transportation Department, two full-time employees with DSS, and several other employees will be re-tasked and restructured up there to accommodate the...
But one of them at DSS was already vacant, correct?
Yeah, I think it may be, but also the one at aging was vacant as well, but to be filled, and we chose not to, because we knew we were going to make these changes. The other ones, in fact, a couple of the part-times were not full, were not filled either. The position in transportation was filled.
You don't have a cost amount on the savings on that.
I do not have the exact salaries of those individuals, no. This also will allow us to expand, that was brought up, that the baby boomers or that age of the senior citizens is going to grow, and we understand that, and that is one of the reasons, a big reason, why we're making these changes, so that we can get ready for that, so that we'll have more departments available and more staff available to provide those services and programs.
What, in regards to, let me see here, one of the, one of the questions was that children and grandchildren will now be involved in the senior center on Corbin, as well as Mount Pleasant, is what involvement or what...
There are no plans to provide youth programs onsite unless they have something to do with an existing program that they're already participating in with their grandparents or their parents. Again... Uh, again, the park, the, the aging programmers will be the ones responsible for programming the senior center. And they are the ones that are doing it right now. So we have no intentions. Now, it would be nice in the future that in the parks, that maybe, that we could do some cross-generational programs. If we go out into the parks and, and maybe the kids could volunteer on, on different programs or the seniors could volunteer. But that's not what's planned to take place at the senior center. That is purely optional. And if you choose not to participate in those type programs, you, you don't have to participate. They would be offsite.
Okay. In regard, that's all the questions I have about Department of Aging. I do, don't know if somebody has an answer for the HCCBG service provider? If someone could give me an answer on that? And what I'm specifically referencing is F3, and F3 says, which was the consent item that got moved to G4. And what that says is that if we were to, if there was a motion to approve this funding plan, it would reorganize, uh, the funding plan to where, um, there is a Human Services Department and a Parks Department respectively to receive funds as a pass-through. And whereas before, or whereas, not before, but whereas we are, as we are today, there is different service providers, which is the Human Services, or excuse me, which is, Department of Aging is a service provider, Transportation Department is a service provider, and the Department of Social Services is a service provider. What is an HCCBG, which is Home Community Care Block Grant? What is that provider?
Under the Home Care Community Block Grant, there are about 20 or 21 services that are, excuse me, that are authorized to be provided in the communities. And those services are provided by service providers. Those service providers are usually about three different types of providers. They're either governmental agencies such as social services or aging or transportation. They can be a nonprofit, such as, such as Mills on Wheels. They're a service provider. Or they can be a private company. When it's a private company, typically I believe HCCBG does require us to bid for that service. But basically what you, what it, what it does is it identifies, there's a, there's a committee. There's a, a committee that sits down and identifies what services that are available under this funding that we, they would like to have in the community. Once those services are identified, then the providers are identified. And again, if it's a government or nonprofit, there's no bidding process. If they have a service that's needed by a private company, they have to go out for bids. And the, and the committee makes those recommendations for the funding level. So basically, social services, for example, will claim X amount of dollars of that, of that community block grant to provide the service that is identified, that it will be provided for us, it's like in-home services. So therefore, we get a certain amount of, of that funding and we go out and provide that services to seniors based on their qualifications.
So what you're saying is that if all this, um, motion would do is to re-identify who the service provider would be?
That is correct. The committee met approximately three or four weeks ago, I would imagine, when the thought process was we, we, they had already done the plan and submitted the plan with Department of Aging, Department of Transportation. In anticipation of potential changes, they went ahead and identified Human Services and the parks as potential recipients of these funds. So they just basically changed the names. The services themselves did not change.
The idea, well, the, it has been thought that this, um, establishing a Human Services Department and Parks Department abolishes the Department of Aging. That's what the thought is. If that was true, it would also abolish the Transportation Department and the Department of Service, Social Services?
That's correct.
Okay.
It will be the Department of Human Services.
Okay, so it's not abolishing anything, it's renaming it?
Renaming it and consolidating those services.
Okay. That's all the questions I have as it relates to G4, the new G4, and also G3 at this time.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just, what I just want to, just kind of clarify, so Mr. Downs, I guess what we're seeing pretty much for this whole thing is a management change about how just the oversight over the services and the activities and programs. And they're pretty much, at the level, at the level of the user, advisory boards, the programs, all those would stay the same. The only thing I can see is, and I think you did address this, is that what are the, how are the folks that come to the senior center to, to tap into the services, the human services that are provided through the senior center, uh, that they will continue to have access to those? And I thought, you know, actually going beyond, I was wondering if there's going to be a computer uplink or whatever where they could get on there, but it sounds like to me that you're, there are going to be scheduled times each week when there will be people, staff will come and be available to address and, and help with those service needs that.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And in the interim, uh, there were some concerns about volunteers. And, and we as staff appreciate volunteers, you don't know how much, and, and you gave out the, the money and the time that you spend. We appreciate that and we can't do our jobs without you. However, we do not expect it. If you don't care to go to Kannapolis, we don't expect you to go to Kannapolis. We have volunteers in that area. But we also have computers where you can still do your volunteer work at the senior center. And you can still work with the same programmer, the same service provider via the computer. Uh, so I, I don't want you to get concerned about that. And I heard a comment from, from the, the lady over there about the Parks Commission. That's what it's called right now, is the Parks Commission. It's an appointed body that, that runs the parks. That, that can change with the, with the name of the department, and it most likely it will. It will still be a Parks Commission that advises on how we, how we manage and what do we build as parks and where they go, and advise the board. What I'm saying is there will be an additional member on that board that will actually have a, will be a representative of the senior center as well. So you're going to have a voice on that board as well. So, so while right now, I know you use the parks too, you may not use them collectively, but individually, I'm sure some of you still go to the parks, so you're going to have a say-so there. So that's what I'm talking about. The reason why it's called, why I said the Parks Commission is because it's currently called the Parks Commission. It may be the Parks and Active Living Commission after we finish this.
Excuse me. I'm a volunteer, and unless you, unless you put your things on.
We got, we got.
I'm a volunteer at the senior center. I volunteer with the Transportation Department. Unless you can put that transportation on the, on the computer so that I can see the CRF that I'm dealing with, forget it. You don't have me as a volunteer anymore. Okay?
Commissioner Burridge, do you have? I don't mean to cut you off. Are you finished?
No.
Commissioner Burridge, comments please on this particular part of the budget? Okay, Commissioner Meesmer?
I've got general comments about the budget.
Okay. Key up. Do you want to make any other comments about this particular area? Okay, let me, I, I'll come right back to you. How's that?
This is on the, pretty much.
Number five?
We are still on the, about the budget, yes.
Number five?
Well, G4, we're still on the budget, the regular budget.
Which we moved to number five on your bill.
Well, we're, we're, we're still on, he asked his questions just to confirm it at that point, but we're still right here.
We're still on the budget?
Yes, sir, we're still on the budget.
Okay. All, all the thing I got to say about, all the thing I got to say about the budget is I don't, I don't see how you can devalue people's property, increase their tax rate, and say you're not having a tax increase. Uh, you know, that, that math don't work with me. I don't know about everybody else, but, uh, I can't vote for this budget, to be honest with you.
Okay, my comments concerning the senior center. My comments concerning the senior center. And I think this is, everybody's already said it. The senior center is just that, is the senior center. And that is not changing. There's, there's not a thing that's going to make it any other name, any other function, any other reason for being than that it's the senior center. That's what's important. The other thing that, um, trying to think, there were two things. I should have written them down while y'all were talking so I wouldn't forget.
You didn't hear it?
The, I did. I did. The senior center is not going to change.
And it's not what we talked about.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hang on, hang on, please. Yes, there have been comments that there are changes at the senior center. We've been provided information to remind us that the land was donated to Cabarrus County for the purpose of a senior center. So that's what I am addressing. It is a senior center and it's going to stay a senior center. Now, I'm not a grandmother at this point in time, and I'm not quite a senior citizen. I think we determined I have a little over a year to go before I hit the, the right age. Okay? I think it's very important, when the opportunities are there, that you have a wealth of knowledge that you can share if you so, so choose with younger students. We have high school graduates sitting here and high school students sitting here. A lot of students don't have anybody in their lives. They don't have parents in their lives, and they sure don't have senior citizens or grandparents in their lives. You have a lot to share. No one is telling you that you must do that and that we're going to make you do that by changing the senior center. Okay? That's completely your choice. If you want to come, and I will give you all, a personal request, if any of you would like to come into my classroom and share your information, please let me know. I will welcome you in after school starts again. Because I can always use people to come in and be great role models for students. So all of you are welcome. If you want to do something, any school in this entire system, whether it's Cabarrus County Schools, Kannapolis City Schools, and I'm sure even the community colleges would welcome you, along with the libraries, they will welcome you. They have, do literacy programs, and there's a huge need there. So if you have the desire to work with other generations, there are plenty of outlets for you to express that desire and for you to share. But the senior center is just that, is the senior center. And if the Council on Aging determines that you want to do something, that's your choice. I'm not going to tell you you can't do it. But I'm also not going to tell you that you have to do that. So the senior center, make sure you understand, is the senior center. Okay, I think that's very important. I want to make sure that everybody, I mean, that's my personal point of view, and I think everybody up here agrees with that, that there is no change in that. We all believe that the services that you have are valuable and they should continue to be provided to you just as they are. Okay, you should still get everything that you're getting now. There are some seniors that aren't getting those services that you so much love. And one idea is to try to find a way to help those people to have access, to expand the wonderfulness that you have, not to diminish anything. That's the way that I understand it. And could be, I don't know, um, but it could be that I have, I guess, a level of comfort with county staff members such as Mr. Murphy, Ms. Strong, Mr. Rose, Mr. Downs, Ms. Dubois, Mr. Marshall, and I can go on and on. I have a comfort level that I believe that when they tell me something, that they are honest with me. And I know that I have, I, I say this often, um, there's probably a different level that they feel like that they need to be honest with me by virtue of having control of the microphone right now. But I think that they should treat me just as they would anybody else. And I have a comfort level that if the county manager and Mr. Rose and Ms. Strong and Mr. Murphy can all stand there and look me in the eye and say, "We're going to continue to provide the same services," then I have a comfort level with them in that regard. And I understand that not everybody is in that position, and I respect that that's the case.
What about this run rate right here that says you're not going to raise taxes if we approve?
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Jason, sorry, you had your talk, you, you had your three minutes. We're still covering about the senior citizen. We're going to talk about the rest of the budget also, okay? So I, I understand. But I just want to make that, that's what I understand from what's been presented. Um, I hold you all, I enjoyed my meeting with you. If you didn't meet in the middle of the day, I would love to come to your meetings more often. But as I told you when you had the meeting at the senior center, I physically cannot be there if you meet at 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning. But I, I do think that you will be, you will have the services provided, and I want to make sure that that is understood, um, by the county manager, that that's what we expect. And we expect no less that the, the services will continue to be provided, that they are currently enjoying, and that's what I understand you to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Meesmer, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Yes. Well, I, let me get a little closer. I have to say that with this, um, the proposed budget here, I've been very disappointed with just the 1.5% cut. I've, I've read through it, and from the very beginning, whenever we began this process in January with the Commissioner's Retreat, I certainly did not believe that, um, a 1.5% cut would suffice. And I know we went through the property reevaluation, and devaluing properties means, well, for instance, for me personally, I have less assets. If we raised the rate, essentially that is a tax increase because I am being taxed more on less assets. And I certainly just cannot support that. I, I do not believe that's correct, and my conscience would not allow me to vote for that. I've talked to many individuals within the community. I run into a lot of people every day. And I have folks that have almost come to tears because they are afraid of what this new tax rate is going to do to them. And with roughly 22 to 28% of property owners within the county will actually be paying additional taxes with this new tax rate, I cannot support that. I do not believe that's appropriate with this economy being as slow as it is. I know within my business, I've dealt with a 15% cut since the economy hit hard. And I've had to restructure, and I've worked with that to make do. And I, and I've had to do that. And I, I certainly just believe the 1.5% cut will not do, and I can't support the budget.
Okay. Um, I guess what I would ask of you then is, we have had.
Well, we're going to mute next Tuesday. Why don't we just table it and let Commissioner Meesmer, Commissioner Burridge come up with cuts between now and Tuesday?
Well, as you can remember, yeah, during the budget meetings, and whenever we started the process in January, we did ask for that. And I asked for, um, a cut across the board. That was made clear of my intentions.
Is that your motion to make, to adopt a budget of a 5% cut budget, cut across the board?
Obviously, that was overruled at the, um, at the retreat. We discussed that.
I would second your motion if you want to do that tonight.
You would?
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't do that at the retreat. So it's interesting now that it's came to that. I discussed that at the retreat. I said that was my proposal.
That was brought up, and I gave you my opinion. And I'm telling you right now, if you want to say 5% cut across the board for every program that can be cut or an average, then I'll second that motion, Commissioner Meesmer.
I've, I've made a proposal, and no other commission on the board, no other commissioner made a proposal.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
If you're prepared to second, sure.
Take, I'd say Commissioner Meesmer has made a motion to cut the budget 5% across the board. Is that on average or is that everything?
That is, obviously, it would not work with the debt service. So.
But debt service?
Yes.
I'd second that motion.
How about the school board?
Well, that's part of it.
That's what I mean. The school board is included, right?
Okay, you can't cut, on the, the handout that I gave you, what's in green is mandated, services at a mandated level. So you need to identify.
If you did support my 5% proposal cut from the beginning, we should have been working through this in this entire process. So it's interesting that, um, at this point, you're willing to support, well, maybe not support, but willing to second a motion whenever, this was clearly discussed in the beginning. We discussed this in January, and there was no support, there was no discussion about it, and now all of a sudden.
I wouldn't say that, Commissioner Meesmer. What I would say is that when you made the motion, or when you didn't make the motion, when you threw it out there as a discussion, as we were bringing up funding, you know, when I was, when I was asking you about Special Olympics, you said, "Oh, no, no, Special Olympics doesn't apply." And when I talked to you about schools, "Oh, no, no, schools does not, do not apply." And then when you, so that what happens is, you, what you do is you make a suggestion, and then you pull out of the suggestion when it's specifically made, such as Special Olympics, when I asked you that night, and you said, "Well, that doesn't apply." And then when we talked about schools, "Well, schools don't apply." You know, Commissioner Meesmer, if you made the suggestion and that's what's fine, then let's talk about it. And if that's what you're willing to do, that's fine. We have a motion, and we have a second.
I don't think that, I don't, I never recall saying that it did not apply to schools. That never come out of my mouth.
Okay.
Now, the Special Olympics, that evening, whenever we had that meeting, that was not part of our discussion. We were strictly discussing the contract at that point. And before that, we'd already discussed the 5%, and it was overruled, overruled.
It was never voted on.
We knew this budget's going to pass 3-2 from the very beginning.
Nope.
We, we never.
We never voted, we never voted on a 5% decrease, I don't think. But anyway, how much cash does the county have on hand right now? How much money they got in the bank?
Keep in mind, we do have to have some fund balance in order to pay the bills.
I understand, I understand that.
But I'm just, I'm just pointing that out because if she gives a number, there's, I don't, I want to make sure whatever number she's trying to pull out of her head, which is a very good head, but nonetheless, that it doesn't include the amount that we, by our ordinance or by our policy, we have to keep 15%. So, that part, we can't, we can't touch that.
Give me the excess over that.
At June 30th, 2011, we had a $14 million excess after our 15% policy and after every potential litigation item that we may had a reason to have money set aside for. Through this budget process, I'm not exactly sure where in the budget document, we spent 9.5 million of that at the board retreat to pay off the annex. Based on how we project the year to end at June 30th, and I do state the word "project", we believe that we would have approximately 14 million in excess if our projections do come out. So, I would say at this point, based on our projections, we roughly have 14 million of excess money beyond our 15% fund balance policy and beyond any reservations of money we had for any potential litigation or other projects that we had designated for our future.
That's with this budget with the tax increase?
With the 70 cent tax increase, how we anticipate to end at June 30th, 2012, we project approximately $14 million to be our excess. Could be give or take a little bit depending on how the year ends, but that's what we projected two months ago.
I thought you just said that of the $14 million, $9 million is to pay off debt.
That was at June 30th, 2011, we had 14 million. It just happens to be the same number.
I understand.
And in February, you voted to spend 9.5 million of that.
To pay off debt.
To pay off debt. The way we project this year end to end, there's a surplus in the revenues over expenditures that will bring that 14 million minus nine and a half back up to 14 million again because we will have excess revenues in 2012 to add back to that excess money.
Does that depend on the economy, or that just depends on the tax increase?
That depends on how revenues end up at June 30th, and with sales tax, how the property tax collections are doing at this point. We're behind a little bit on the percentage rate on that, any state and federal monies, and what expenditures we don't expend that we actually budgeted for.
The proposed 70 cent tax increase will have an effect on next year's budget. It won't have an effect on, on year end this year.
It's got nothing to do with this $14 million?
Correct.
So, you'll have $14 million in 2013?
2012. At June 30th, 2012, our excess money is projected to be 14 million.
And that $9 million didn't come out of that. That's totally $14 million you got as of June 2012.
This is where it gets complicated. It just happens to be the same. At June 30th, 2011, we had a $14 million excess.
Okay. I got you, I got you.
And then we spent part of it, and what, basically, what we spent, we're going to generate in excess revenues over expenditures this year. That's why it's coming back to the same number.
So, none of this 14 million's been spent?
This time, if that's where...
As of June 30th, 2012, you got $14 million.
Correct, if our projections come in correctly.
Some went out, and some's going to come back in as a result of the year-end totals.
Sorry for the confusion. It just happens to be the same number. It's weird.
It's just like your check. That's the total amount of cash money the county has on hand right now.
It is not encumbered in another way.
Unassigned, unassigned.
Unassigned money after we close the books, which will be approximately September the 1st, when we will receive all of our Medicaid payments, we will receive all of our, our federal and state grant monies, we will receive all of our sales tax, and we will receive all of our property tax collections, and we will have paid all of our invoices for the fiscal year ended June 30th. And that is, like I said, the excess of the 15% fund balance. Now, if you keep a 15% fund balance and something happens and you spent that whole $14 million, you have nowhere to go, if that helps any, based on your policy. We can modify policies, but that's what your policy states, and that's what I have to adhere to.
And the $14 million that we're talking about, that's where approximately 3, 4, 3 to 4 million of one-time projects would come out of that. So, that would reduce that down. If you choose to, to select some projects for the schools and for the county to go ahead and do with one-time money, that would reduce that $14 million.
That's coming out of $14 million?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah. And again, that, that's a projected number, so when the books are closed, that may be 11 million or maybe 15 million, but they're projecting right now, they feel pretty comfortable that it's going to be 14 million. But it, it may change.
Well, it just seems to me like some way or another, we've got to start doing something different other than taxes. We need to start some fees. Parks ought to be a fee to go to the park.
Isn't that a tax?
Huh?
Isn't that a tax?
Nope.
If you charge a fee, if you charge a fee to go to the park, isn't that a tax?
If you go to theater, buy a ticket, is that a fee? Is that a tax?
Well, theater is a private industry.
Well, the parks, so, I mean, you know, how many, how many, how many people go to parks that actually pay taxes?
I do. I would imagine...
I'm talking about majority. I'm talking about majority.
I imagine the majority of these people in this room, if 95% of them, if not more, pay taxes, and they go to the parks.
But you can still have a fee-based system.
So, you get double taxed?
Instead, no, you're not getting double taxed. You take it out of the system, tax system.
No, if I go to, if I have to pay to go to a park that I'm paying taxes on, then I'm getting double taxed.
I'm saying not pay, not put it in the budget, let it stand on its own.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, sir.
Make a few comments. I think, first of all...
Well, let's recognize that, I, hang on one more second. Did you make the motion? I just want to clarify, make sure if you made the motion.
He made a second.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that it came out of your mouth, not over here. So, we do have a motion, and we do have a second. I just want to clarify, we have a motion on the table as we continue our discussions. Yes, sir.
And I want to remind, number one, it's about three different things I want to cover, and one I may cover now and wait for the other two, but we're talking about 5% cut across the board, and that's the question before us. And I know that you have to eliminate debt service out of that, and there's some other items that are mandated spending and some contractual obligations that we have that you cannot touch. When it comes down to it, when you land up doing it is by, if that's going to be an average across the board of 5%, then if you look at sheet, I don't have a sheet over here with me, but a matrix, I pretty well memorize it. I've been dealing with it for the last seven or eight years that we've had it in place. I'm good, I'm good. Because I can tell you that if you look at the yellow, that's the first place we have to go. And for everybody out here that cheered and all go about taxes, but disagree with taxes going up, here's the, pretty much, the, I can tell you pretty much from memory, here's the things that we pay for because we choose to pay for them. We choose to fund them, and those are the things we have to go to first. Libraries. Are we prepared to shut the libraries down? Are we prepared to shut down the parks? Are we prepared to shut down cooperative extension? Are we prepared to lay off our paramedics and get basic-level EMTs so that when, you know, that will obviously affect their ability to provide emergency medical services? And the last two, are we prepared, we were talking about tonight about reorganizing the management and the oversight of senior services and senior programs, are we prepared because it is a discretionary program, not just to rearrange it, but to shut it down? All of senior programs, because that's what would happen. In essence, that's what would occur. And you can shake your head, but the problem is, and this goes, the second thing is, is that, you know, it's like hearing it all over again, deja vu all over again, is that for 10 years, I sat on this board and listened to this thing, where Commissioner proudly proclaims how he's not voting for a tax increase. He cannot vote for a tax increase and will not vote for a tax increase, but at the same time, will never propose what it is that he feels like the county should not be involved in funding. Now, to me, it is a two-way street. We, we can, okay, we could take the $14 million, and we could allocate that next year, and we could lower the tax rate, and we could keep the tax rate at 63 cents. But you know what? We found out about 10 years ago, what you're going to have happen is that next year, you're going to come back, and you're going to have the same spending level, you're going to have reduced revenue because you went 63 cent tax rate, and what you're going to end up with is then another $12 million hole. Where are you going to get the money then? So, what, I guess what I'm saying is, is that we've got to look at, what are we, what are we going to do? Because in January, we did start discussing, and I remember sitting there talking about, what is it do we want to cut? And I've looked at a 5%. I went, I actually took a spreadsheet and computed what that would be, and yes, it would gut most of the services, most of, all the discretionary services we provide as services to the citizens of this county. That's what would happen. We would, you know, this revale thing, and we go into it for just a second, is that look at the revale. There are 82,000 parcels in the county, okay? 5,900 of those parcels this last revale went up in property value. So, even if we went to 63 cent tax rate, those property parcels would still see a tax increase, okay? So, you knock those out of there. There's, there's another 58,822 parcels that if you went to a 73 cent tax rate, their taxes would go down. The amount of money they would pay would go down. Now, we can argue all day long, and I'm never going to convince those people that feel like that that is a tax increase, but, but 1 times 12 equals 12, 3 times 4 equals 12, and 2 times 6 equals, all equal 12. But if you look at that, then that leaves 17,323 parcels then that are somewhere between no increase in property value to a 10% drop. That's the ones we're looking at. Those are the ones, those 17,000, would land up with a tax increase, and it would range all the way from 20 cents to thousands of dollars. But what I've looked at is that if you take and rank order those, there's about 14,000 of those properties that would see a $60 tax increase or less in the next year. That's $5 or less per month. Now, it's a tax increase. I agree with you. It's totally, it's a tax increase. But that leaves about 3,500 properties out there that then we would, would see a tax increase larger than $60. Are we prepared to gut all of our county services, fundamentally change the county government on one vote? That way, we can promise, and we can be brag about that we didn't raise taxes, that we didn't raise, because we didn't raise the tax rate, that we kept it at 63 cents. Are we willing to gut all those programs for those 3,500 parcels? Because that's what it is. That's what it comes down to. And I know that we've had one gentleman that's been very vocal about the tax rate. I happen to, because it's public record, I happen to just glance and see what his taxes did, and I think he's going up 40 cents for the year on his property. Concord, Kannapolis, both have already approved their budgets. They went to, they, they went beyond where we went. We cut $4 million out of our spending to get to 70 cent tax rate. They had no qualms about going revenue neutral, and my understanding is, there's not a single citizen showed up at their meetings to speak out against that tax increase, against that, that, against the revenue neutral, I'm setting revenue neutral tax rate. So, I guess what I'm saying is, that motion before the floor, the question before us is, do we adopt a budget that cuts 5% across the board on those things that we can cut? And I guess that's the question, I'm sure we've got to consider, but at this point in time, I cannot support that.
Well, in rebuttal to your arguments, you say that, you know, you, you've seen commissioners that say they will not vote for a tax increase of any sort, whatever that may be, and a 5% cut is not going to shut down parks, it's not going to shut down the senior center, it's not going to shut down the libraries. This is not going to happen. As I said before...
Do you know that? Do you know that for fact?
It's not going to, a 5% cut.
Okay.
And also, and it's easy, you know, one thing I can say is that I've seen commissioners on the flip side of the coin that says, "Well, you don't want your, you know, police officers cut, you don't want your parks cut, you don't want your libraries cut," and it's easy to hide behind that because that's what strikes a nerve with individuals. But we've got a whole sheet of things here. All of these items in the blue are mandated, but to what amount do we want to fund that? It's not just the parks, it's not just the libraries. That is, it's easy to hide behind that and strike a nerve.
Well, Commissioner Meesmer, what I would like for you and Commissioner Burge to do then is put it in writing, go out and make a public stand of what you do not want to fund. Don't, don't sit here and say you're not going to vote for a tax increase, and then all the time that you're smiling and bragging about how much you support the programs that we have to spend money on, but you're not willing to say what you're going to cut. To me, that is disingenuous.
I hadn't said anything about supporting any government program. As far as I'm concerned, we've cut most of them out. You sit there and talk about... You can't never cut nothing in government. Just government just keeps getting bigger and bigger, and you keep taking out the public sector's pocket, and I think most public sector people's tired of it.
Okay. Why do we cut?
I mean, you're taking it out of their pocket every year.
I would like, I'd like to make...
But you need to, if you're going to cut 5%, then say which programs you want to cut. In the blue, identify.
It's a 5% across the board. Why would I go through and identify different programs?
Because some of those programs are people. Are you willing to say to the libraries, "Thank you. We were hoping to increase your hours, but now we want to cut them back even more because it's not that important"? Are you willing to tell the senior citizens here? Because in yellow, by the way, is aging in-home services, aging nutrition, aging senior services, social services, adult daycare. In the blue, you've got social services, animal, adult, sorry, adult and family services. You've got transportation services. You've got, those are the, I think those are the ones that I can pick out the quickest. Those would all be cut.
What's it cut?
By the way, make sure you understand that, those of you that are cheering, what you're getting at the senior center will be cut 5%. You will miss additional employees, and you will miss additional services. So, make sure you know that.
Whenever I have department heads that tells me that a 5% cut would not touch their budget, then I know...
Which department heads?
I'm not going to put them on the spot here.
I want to know which ones, they're not, that they don't care.
I've heard it, and you also hear about trying to spend the money for the budget.
I'm sorry, I pushed the wrong button. I apologize.
That's okay. You also hear about budgets, or departments that try to spend their money at the end of the year to spend that so they get the same amount next year.
If there are departments that don't need the funding that they have requested, I would like to know exactly which departments those are.
That's departments I will discuss with Mike.
We're going to vote on a budget. I want to know which ones are going to be cut.
That's the whole purpose of why we're here tonight, is that if there are departments that have a confidence enough to you to raise that, then you never brought it up at any one of our budget meetings tonight when you're asked specifically, "What is the department?" So, we can identify and make that cut tonight. We're here tonight, ready to do it.
You're not ready, you're not ready to, you haven't done it for six years on this board.
Tell me, tell me what it is, Commissioner Meesmer.
No, sir. No, sir. No, sir. This is, this is our discussion.
And a 5% cut is not going through choosing which department. It's a 5% across the board. And as, and what's so ironic about it is that you're so interested about the 5% cut tonight, whenever we started this process in January.
Well, Commissioner Meesmer, when we talked about the schools, I raised the question, and you got very mad at me when I asked the schools, "What would 5% cut affect and do to you, and what would you do?", and you got very upset with me, and you did not allow them to answer the question.
No. You asked them, "Did you prepare a 5% cut in their budget?", whenever you asked no other department.
Madam Chairman, if I could propose a, something here because it appears that we're heading nowhere tonight. We've got, do have a question before us about the 5% cut. Before we vote on that, what I would like to see, and I, and I've been saying this since, I believe, January myself, is that I think that the best thing we can do is ask the county manager to prepare for us two other options. Here's the option with a 70 cent tax rate that is, that has cuts of $4 million on top rate that is, that has cuts of four million dollars on top of the eight million dollars that have been cut out of the budget over the last seven years in this county. I would like for him, if, if consensus of the board, or, or, I don't know, there's a question before the board right now, to see what a 5% cut would look like, and that can be published on our webpage. And I would also like to see what a sixty-three cent tax rate would look like and have that as well published, so we can see where the cuts would have to come from in order to meet those two requirements. And I would like, you know, and I think the public needs to know that. I think the public needs to understand that. Because obviously, it's easy to say, I'm not going to vote to raise taxes, but if, but if you're not willing to look at where it's at, and the public, and the public hears that, and you stand up there and yell rah rah, preach it. But you know what? It doesn't mean, what it means is, is that then the real cuts take place, and people then go, what in the world is going on? So I think the people need to understand where those cuts need to come from. And if y'all are not willing to propose them tonight, I think that is, and I think that in order to help the public understand it better, I think that they need to see of where those cuts would come from.
Well, and you're exactly right. We should have different scenarios within a budget. And that's what we discussed in January, and we were supposed to give direction to the staff, and none of the commissioners would give direction to the staff. We should have, we should have different budget scenarios, and I did, I did not ask specifically...
You should have asked the staff specifically to not, or during our budget discussions.
It was our general discussion, and I was quickly overruled.
But with a thirteen and a half percent drop...
I'm sorry. If you had asked for the staff to prepare the budget, they would have prepared it for you. No different than if I had asked them. It, it wouldn't have been any different. You were more than welcome to ask the staff. For us to have had four budget meetings plus two work sessions and to get to tonight, and...
You've known my opinion since January.
But you, you took that off. You, it was mentioned a couple times, and you said, no, 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 we're not talking about that anymore. And so...
I never said that. I never said we were not going to discuss that.
It was not discussed. All you had to say in any budget meeting is, Erica, present a budget to us to be looked at tonight, or preferably last week in the, in the budget sessions. And she would have had it for us. So at this point in time, I mean, I'm not going to vote for a 5% across the board cut blindly without having any idea which departments, and yes, there are some. For example, we've been told veterans, a 5% cut for them will eliminate a position. So if we're gonna, if people are gonna lose jobs, I want to know exactly who's gonna lose their jobs and how that's gonna be. So I'm not going to vote for a 5% cut tonight. If it's, if it has to go to a vote for that, then I can tell you I will vote no because I don't have the details. If you want those details, you should request the details, and we are gonna meet, we're already talking about, we're gonna recess the meeting, and we can have a full-blown meeting on Tuesday, and we can have it on TV to make sure all the conversation gets in there at that time. But I can tell you that I've looked over all of these. We've talked, talked numerous scenarios, and up to this point, I have asked, I've asked both you and Commissioner Burridge, identify what needs to be cut. Tell me what you want to cut. Tell me exactly which services you want to cut.
I've told you exactly, 5%.
5% doesn't tell me which services you want to cut because...
Across the board. What, I don't understand.
But we talked about this originally, the mandated mandate, the part in the green, you can't touch. So a 5% across the board cut, if you mean it for the total, that means some of these are going to be cut seven or eight percent. Some of these, our money gets matching funds for the federal government. So if we cut our match, we lose federal money or state monies. So do you want those numbers cut? I need to know very specifically which ones you want to cut. And that's all I'm saying, is I need to have the information. I can't make a decision without having it in front of me. And I, I am dismayed that we've come to this point in time without having that information specifically requested in multiple budget meetings to be specifically prepared by staff. That's all I can say.
Everything I've heard brought up in the budget session is, we can't cut that. We can't cut that. We can't cut that. So I mean, I've, you know, I've sat down listening, we can't cut that. Where, you know, if that's what y'all don't want to cut it, y'all got a budget before you tonight. If you want to vote on it, vote on it. I don't have a problem with you voting on it.
And if you want to cut it, you should identify and be on the record what you want to cut. Because in January, you...
I've been told you cut everything you don't have to do.
Okay, that's everything in yellow, and that's not enough. So what I want you to do is be very specific, because in January, you identified ten thousand dollars, and we found a way to fund that, and that was cut. But that's not the, the four million that was cut in this version, and it's not 5% across the board. So please, I'm just begging you, identify.
We also talked about privatizing some things that...
What would you like to privatize?
I, I don't know. We talked about some things that retreat. I don't remember anything being privatized or even talked about.
And they can't do it without our vote. So you have to bring it up, and you have to say what we need to do.
There were quite a few things in general services that were privatized to realize have budget savings. I know that. If there's something, something outside of general services, I'm not certain about that. But I know that general services, Mr. Billifer decided to private, or recommended that several aspects of general services be privatized. Is, am I incorrect in that, Mr. Downs?
We do use quite a few private contractors to perform our work for us, and included in this budget, the, the household hazardous waste recycling program has been privatized and just within this budget here. So that was a reduction in staff, and we are now contracting that out in addition to what's already been done in the past.
Do, uh...
How much was the deduction in the general services budget?
That, that particular program was a reduction of about fifty thousand to fifty to sixty thousand dollars. That was the salary and benefits of an employee.
Privatizing does not mean you don't still pay for it. It just means that you pay for it through another entity. So you can privatize, you sometimes can save money, and sometimes you don't. But I just want to point that out, that you can privatize things, and, and I don't have a problem with that. But that still means you have that obligation, and now you have a contractual obligation to some other company to do that work for you.
I know if you privatize, that somebody's gonna come here and do it for nothing, we're gonna have to pay them. But my question is, is there a thing we could do that would be cheaper for somebody else to do it other than the county?
And that's what Mr. Billifer identified, and that's what Mr. Billifer proposed to us, and we've accepted.
I thought we also talked about the janitorial service, too.
That was privatized. That was one of the things that Mr. Billifer...
Was that privatized?
We have not, we have, it is privatized across the street at the law enforcement center, the other buildings. It is not privatized because at this time, the numbers did not come back that they would be favorable towards privatization. We are currently, at our staffing levels and our operational cost level, we're still doing it cheaper than we can take it outside. Again, across the street, we are privatizing that because it was a specialized building, but we are working, we're monitoring that contract every year as well to make sure that it is still better to go outside than it is to do it in-house.
Okay, I would enter a substitute motion that we move this item to our meeting next Tuesday, and that the, whatever numbers that commissioners want needs to be mentioned right now so that staff has some time to turn something around. They don't have that much time to get it done, and they need to be able to get the information to us prior to that meeting because personally, I don't, can't sit here and go through every single line item and compare it while we're sitting in the meeting. I'd like to be able to get the meeting, the information at least sometime on Monday so that I have a chance on Tuesday to look at it. So I would make a substitute motion that this item be moved to next Tuesday. And if there's a second, we go with that. Otherwise, we will, I'll call the question, and we'll vote on the, the motion at hand.
We, we can, I, I'm comfortable with waiting for the different scenarios. However, we know it's not going to change the vote. We know it's not going to. And, you know, as I said, you know, I mean, I've expressed my opinion since January, and we've been told no, no, no. And so, you know, but I, I'm willing to wait. That is fine. But we know the outcome's not going to change.
The details are not that important, and I think the details are extremely important.
Madam Chairman, I just had one question, and as Commissioner Meesmer, is that, okay, 5% across the board. Say we do that. Our property values drop by thirteen and a half percent. Five and a half, 5% will still result in a tax rate higher than sixty-three cents. By your own, your own, by your own, I guess your own philosophy, that is a tax increase. Why would you vote for a tax increase with 5% cuts that would gut a lot of the services? You won't cut, you know, you won't vote for a so-called tax increase when it's seventy cents, and of course, I have a feeling it's still going to be a tax increase, so you still won't be able to support it at 5%. But 5% is not going to touch thirteen and a half percent. Thirteen and a half percent is about seventeen million dollars.
I understand that, and I've sat through the budget sessions to understand that quite well. And as you can recall, at the retreat, I said that I understand the tax rate cannot stay at sixty-three cents.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna, you support a tax increase then?
Well, if it, I think the most people I've talked with is comfortable with a few pennies, but seventy cents is too high.
Well, that's, that's what I pointed out a moment ago, is that when you look at where a seventy-cent tax rate is at, you're looking at, for most people in the county, for ninety percent of the people in the county, they will see no more than a sixty-dollar tax increase per year. And that is only about 5% of the property owners, about probably a good seventy-five percent of the property owners will see a decrease in their property taxes.
Seventy-five percent?
Yeah. Fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-two parcels on the sheets you've got before you. All those that are highlighted in gold would pay an equal or less tax. That's seventy-one point six nine percent. There's another fourteen thousand, there's another fourteen thousand whose property taxes would go up no more than sixty dollars for the entire year.
Okay, but you see twenty-eight percent is going to pay higher taxes.
The twenty-eight percent includes that fourteen thousand. So if you take those away, you're left with about fifty-nine hundred parcels that increased in value that would see a tax increase regardless of what tax rate we set, and you see another thirty, about thirty-five hundred parcels that would see a tax increase greater than sixty dollars. What I'm saying is, is sixty dollars, either a tax increase up to sixty dollars includes about eighty-five, eighty-nine percent of the parcels in the county. And for the vast majority of those, they, seventy-one percent of those would see the taxes go down. So I, what I'm saying is, is that a tax increase is a tax increase. If we're going to go to school 5%, then we're still increasing taxes. And I think we probably kind of think of it based on the budget levels and the fact that we've cut about, based, you know, based on revenue neutral by cutting three cents out, I think we've almost already cut 5% out of the budget, I believe. If somebody could do that figure right quick based on the total expenditures...
Five percent would be three point five, well...
Well, if seventy-three million, seventy-three cent tax rate, one point seven cents per, I think that's five point one million dollars we've cut out of the budget.
Right, but it's off, it's off by about a point six cents.
Yeah, okay. Well, somewhere around four to five million dollars we're gonna cut of the budget. If it's a two-hundred-million-dollar budget, then, then that, I believe that comes out to about 5%.
Okay, we had a motion on the floor. I've entered a substitute motion. Is there a second to my substitute motion to delay this to next Tuesday? Okay, if not, that motion dies for lack of a second. We still have a motion on the floor for a 5% across the board cut, and there is a second. Is there any other comments? All those in favor of the motion on the board, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
No. I'm sorry, I want, I need to poll the board to find, to make sure for vote.
It's four one.
How did you vote?
I don't, I'm not favored.
Key up your mic, because I need to make sure that she has the right, the vote.
I said no.
Okay. So that motion dies four, fails four to one. Okay, at this point in time, is there another motion to be considered concerning the budget?
Madam Chairman, I have a move that we approve the budget as proposed by the county manager with a seventy-cent tax rate. It was, it is based upon, I don't like the fact that we had to raise the tax rate in a, in a year when our values went down. I don't like that. What I don't like also is the fact that we have, over the last twelve years, and I'm as guilty as anyone about it because I voted for it myself, that we've borrowed four-hundred-and-ninety-three million dollars to build schools with, that we now are paying the debt service on, that, that creates a mandatory tax. I think several years ago, somebody coined it as the cabarrus youth tax because that's what's happened. It's been passed on, and it was created when the housing bubble was here, but it's still with us when the housing bubble's gone. But in looking at the facts and looking at how the parcels have broken out and analysis I've done on it, I don't see us gutting county services for the sole purpose of saying, of being able to say ten years from now when we want somebody to hear us that we're, we've never voted for a tax increase. So I'll make that motion.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. I would like to add an amendment to the motion if it's acceptable, and that is that the Parks and Rec staff will be placed in a different facility other than the senior center.
I'll second that, Madam Chair. And I'd also make...
I asked, I need to make sure, you made the motion, and I want to see if you will agree to finding another home for those four individuals. I think it's four. Three, four. Four, those four individuals.
That, that means, that means parks won't be over senior center, right?
They won't be located in the senior center.
Well, they shouldn't be over them either.
The senior center will stay just as it is, and the parks will not be there.
And they will not be over it. And I, I think that's what all these people are asking for.
I understand. I want to make sure, I want them out of that particular facility.
Well, and, and totally out of the senior center.
They're not going to be in the senior center.
And not over it.
I think they, I, I have no problem with a human services department that works in conjunction with each other. If they will not be located at the senior center, we'll find them another place. They have a place now. We were trying to be able to consolidate and save some money.
You wasn't saving no money.
Sure, if you, if you, we eliminate a building...
One position.
And eliminated a building that we can then sell.
They could go to DSS. You got plenty of space up there.
I didn't, I didn't say they could. There's another place that we will find for them. The idea, one of the ideas was to eliminate that building and the upkeep of that building.
Surely, we're not gonna go buy them another building?
I'm not planning on it. I didn't, that wasn't, had nothing to do with the motion.
I mean, I, from what I understand, the senior citizens is they do not want to be in parks. And, and I think that we ought to honor the senior citizens. One day, I'll be one.
We hope you make it to that age. We hope you make it to that age. Commissioner Caruth, I need to make, you're the one that made the motion.
That I just, I think that we have, and I've seen it twice in last year, the demographics that show that over the next ten to twenty years, the largest segment of population in our country are going to be those fifty-five years of age and older.
Yes!
What that means, what that means is our parks and leisure services have to be, and I've told this, I think I told back twelve years ago, talking with Mike Murphy then, that one day, because the baby boomer generation and generation X, extras that are coming behind them are, are, are much more active, and it's going to have to be a park of the Parks and Recs. The Parks and Rec is going to have to become parks. Either that, or Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, I, I believe, long-term, it is only going to enhance the services and the programs we provide for older adults in this community, for them to be integrated in an overall leisure program and leisure services programs in the county because that's how we plan for activities, that's how we plan for programs. And, and I, and I, that's one thing that I, I agree that let's find another home for the park employees. But I think that when you're looking at leisure services, that's part of leisure services. And as we expand those programs over the next few years, there's going to be more and more programs that are going to be catering to senior adults. And it only enhances it by having professionals, parks and recreation practitioners to be the ones that help to put those programs together in the future.
Do you accept the amendment?
I accept amendment, yeah.
Do you, are you comfortable with the second? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the floor. Although, is there any other discussion?
Is this a motion and a second as it relates to passing the budget and taking the parks employees out of the senior center?
Yes.
Okay. But, Madam Chair, just for a point of clarification, you're, you're proposing to not move the four parks employees into the senior, senior, senior center building, excuse me.
That is correct.
But the other, the other reorganization is intact.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Meesmer, were you keying up?
No.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard a click. I wanted to make sure. Didn't want to leave you out. Any other comments, questions?
I would like to have a comment before we vote if there's any discussion.
Then it's now time for discussion.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You know, we've heard quite a bit tonight, is that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I certainly understand that theory, and I ascribe to that theory. The concern that I have is if you're not willing to look at seeing if things can be done differently for better, then we will always stay in a rut. And y'all have a tremendous opportunity down there, and what I would encourage is that let's see what happens over the next year. If we made a bonehead decision right now, and that's what y'all are thinking, I know y'all are thinking that. But if, but what happens is this, if we do, if we did not make a right decision tonight, we can make that change back. But what, but what, what...
Hang on, please. Excuse me.
Listen, I respectfully, I respectfully listened to y'all, and I didn't cut y'all off while y'all were talking. I would ask for the same respect back to me. What I'm saying is this, y'all may not like whatever vote happens tonight, but what I'm trying to say is that there are times when we need to look at different ways to do things. And I'm not saying that's a perfect decision. I'm not saying that's the exact right decision. But time will tell. And I know that at least one person in this, if things ain't broke, don't fix it. If things don't change, I know one of y'all has run several marathons on different continents. And if you take that theory, or if you take that belief, she would never... And if you take that theory, or if you take that belief, she would never have run those. If you take that idea, she would never have gotten out of Cabarrus County. But I'm telling you is that we're trying to do the best we can in regards to making some of these decisions. And we hope, and we believe, that these changes will be for the good. Time will tell as to whether or not it's good. And you've got to help us in regards to at least working in that regard, in that avenue. And this idea that it has not been brought to the Department of Aging, it's been discussed for a number of years. If that didn't trickle down to you, I don't know why it didn't. I'm going to ask that the department, County Manager, look into that as to why the Department of Aging Board was not presented with that information. It was presented to us some time ago, and I would ask, why was the liaison from this commission did not inform the Advisory Board or discuss that with the Advisory Board? I don't know that. I'm not that liaison. I know that the, the groups that I'm a liaison for, as things are going on with the Commission, I talk to the groups, I talk to those committees, I talk to those boards. Each one of us commissioners has a responsibility to those different boards, to bring back information that commissioners are talking about, or what's going on in the county that affects those boards. So I would think that we need to find out what hap, what happened there. Now-
I can, let me interject there. I, I'm the liaison to the Senior Center, and I believe I've probably been to maybe one of the board meetings and maybe one of the events. And, and I certainly know that has been a concern, however, you know, I, I am assigned to, let's say, eight different liaison positions, and I always receive agendas, emails, information saying when the board meetings are. I have not received but maybe two reminders since I have been elected to this position. I would have been more than happy to attend any of those meetings, any of my liaison positions or any of the other board. I serve with your board chair on another board, and she can tell you, I attend those meetings very regularly, every single month. And I would have been to your meetings. I never get any information about what's going on at the Senior Center. And that's been my reasoning, and that's my heartfelt, that's my heartfelt truth, that is exactly the reason I have not, have not shown a presence, because I do not get any information.
Okay, now-
You have to come up to the microphone, because we are on live TV, and they would like to be able to hear you also, ma'am.
Thank you.
Right there.
My name is Kay Scott, and I do serve on the Department of Aging Board and the Social Services Board. Chris, and I had this discussion a little earlier, several number of weeks ago, and it really disturbed me when he said that he had not received the information about our meetings. I checked, and the, all the information that I receive each month prior to a Department of Aging meeting is done by email. And the email address that they have for you, they, the Department of Aging checked that out, and it, and they went. Now, why you didn't receive them, I, I don't know. I, I do not know, but there, it was not an intent to ever not inform you, and they're always on the third Monday of, of every month. I'm, I'm really sorry that you haven't been able to, and, and especially if you felt that you were not informed.
Yeah, sure, and I don't think it's any intention on behalf of your board or the staff at the Senior Center, I don't think there's any clear intention there. It's just, it's been unfortunate that I haven't received any information, and, you know, that's, that's been the reason that I have not, you know, attended the regular board meetings.
And I will interject, when I was at the Senior Center, I mentioned to a few of you that asked me about it, there is another Chris Meesmer within Cabarrus County. And I mentioned that we needed to verify and make sure that you did in fact have the correct email address. So if you will do me a favor, before you leave tonight, we have a few other things to get through, if you will make sure that you write down, or if you have one of your business cards, if you will make sure that, that you have it, then we can make sure that he does have the right email address in your system. Thank you. But I do know that there are, there is another, prior to him, there was another Chris or Christopher, I don't know which one, he's still, he's still in the system, and so if you just go for Chris Meesmer, you may in fact get the wrong one and not realize it.
I have another point that I would just, and it's just for clarification. The Senior Center has, we ran out of space for office space, and we're just really tight.
And if you'll let me, if you'll hold that-
Thank you.
I have a note, but we need to get through this part to get to the next part.
Yes, yes.
No, no problem, but I think I have a, I have a comment, let me just leave it at that, okay?
May I finish?
Yes, sir, please do.
One other thing that was brought up tonight is that last year, when the quarter cent sales tax was passed, that it was passed so that there would not be an increase of 2.2 cents, and that's been noted a couple of times at our last meetings, and what is being neglected or not being told, is that that was previous to our last year's budget, and the discussion is that the tax increase would affect last year's budget of 2.2 cents, because the quarter cent sales tax was going to go towards a mortgage payment. So that meant information's being misinformed. The, another matter is that it was talked about, that an analysis that was done with the Tribune being a $200,000 home would see an increase in taxes, and I would agree with that analysis. The difference is that the valuation of the property, if it was a $200,000 four years ago, and it went down in value because of the economy, then it would not be paying an increased taxes. That's the whole pur, purpose of the, the point, so that the idea that was made is that a $200,000 home four years ago would pay the same taxes as a $200,000 home today, or more in taxes, that's a misnomer. And finally, in regards to the overvaluing of property, what we vote on is a schedule, or is, is schedule of values. And the values were announced in five years ago, and at the time the values were done, that was just before the recession took place. So that today, if we didn't do a revaluation, there are many people that would be paying more taxes than they should be paying, based on the true value of their homes. And it's been mentioned tonight that the county has devalued property. If the county didn't devalue property, the economy did. The recession has done the devaluation, where the property's not worth the same now as it was before. That is not the county's responsibility. The county's responsibility by law is that we have to collect taxes on the fair market value of the property. And if we do not do a revaluation, when we know that the values are wrong, then we are doing a disservice to the people. So that there's a lot of things there that you need to look at, and it's not just as easy as picking and choosing or saying our tax rate is too high. We have certain services, and if we want to cut those services, whether it's a 5% cut across the board, I think it needs to be done in a more programmatic process, and as it's being raised, is to address those issues piecemeal, not on the eve of passing a vote, a boat, oh, excuse me, passing a budget. So I will be in support of this, because, number one, one of the things is the libraries are very important. They're hugely important to, to our economy and to our people, is that there are schoolchildren out there that do not have access computers, there are young people, there are middle-aged people, there are old people that do not have access to books. And to say, well, they can go out and buy them, they have the opportunity in the, in the libraries to read these books, to read books that are far beyond what they normally would read, and to go to different places that they may not be able to vacation to. Libraries are very important. And especially, we had an issue years ago regarding senior projects, and that there were not enough computers to do senior projects. Well, there's still a lot of projects that youth need to be involved in. Right now, there's a summer reading program that's involved for many children, and that is something that needs to be done, and I think that it needs to be open to all, that we can possibly open it to. And I think that the aging, y'all do a wonderful service in Cabarrus County, and to hear the senior Olympics that y'all attend, that y'all participate in, is phenomenal. And it's something that's encouraging for people of all ages to be able to do. And I know that my mother recently passed, and to have the opportunity to go with her either to the Senior Center and interact with other seniors is tremendous. I grew up on a street that I interacted with many seniors, and to hear stories and to hear life tales, they taught me a lot. And there's a lot of value to seniors, and I will treasure them. And the thing about it is, as we're trying to figure out what are services that we can enhance for y'all and for the seniors, that is what we're trying to do. We're not trying to take away, and there, it may be some bumps in the road. There are going to be bumps in the road, but bumps in the road makes us stronger people and a stronger community, because sometimes we get it right, sometimes we get it wrong. And just to blanketly say we're getting it wrong, I'm not willing to do that. I'm more of an optimist. There are well opportunities out there. I would love for my children to interact with y'all, because y'all have so many vast ideas and thoughts and ways to live life, that they will not be able to get to participate, because their grandparents aren't around unfortunately anymore. And that's what I see in our youth, and what y'all have to, y'all have to do. Y'all's passion tonight has been awesome. You know, we have gotten a lot of chewing, that's fine, that's what we get elected to do. But also, we listen, and we're hearing what y'all have to say, and we hope that we have made the right decision, or we will make the right decision, and if not, then let's make a change. Let's make a change. I'm, I'm not opposed to looking at, looking back over it and seeing how we can do things differently if it's not done right. And I would encourage Commissioner Meesmer to meet with Mr. Downs and identify those departments, whether you want to do it publicly or whether you want to do it privately, I don't care. But if there's, if there are departments that can do with less, 5% less, identify them to Mr. Downs, and let us make those changes throughout this next year. And the savings that we have, we able to recoup that to the taxpayers. So whether you want to do that public or privately, I don't care, but let's get it done. Because I haven't had department heads talk to me like that, and if they've talked to you about that, please, use that confidence to help us reduce the taxes for next year, or to realize savings this year that we can go into another way. That's what I would encourage. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any other conversation, discussion on anybody's part? Yes, sir.
You know, we keep talking about, the first thing comes up every time you talk, talking about raising taxes or not raising taxes, is we got to cut the libraries, we got to cut the parks, we got to take the deputies' cars away from them, put them walking. And all these things that we got to cut, I know, I'm sure every government program started out with good intentions, and just like you said, was in a rut. And most government programs are in a rut, but most of them so deep and so costly that we can't afford them no more, and that's the reason we've got a $14 trillion debt in this country. State's got a big debt, county's got a debt, and we keep wanting to increase taxes, and the private sector cannot keep footing the bill for this stuff, when we taking 50% of what most people make now for some kind of tax. And I just think at some point in time, we got to stop doing it.
Any other comments?
I would just like to say, you know, this is, I mean, certainly this has been a very interesting meeting and a lot of discussion, but I certainly appreciate the healthy debate, and, you know, that's what we were elected to do, and for our citizens to come and participate. And so I, I certainly appreciate the healthy debate, and this is our job, and this is, you know, what we're supposed to do. So I wish every commissioner meeting was this lively, because it really makes, you know, it makes, it makes you feel good about what you're doing. And we all come from different perspectives, and we all have different ideas, but, you know, we're five different people, and we come from five different backgrounds, and that's what's important. And I, I appreciate all the conversation tonight.
Madam Chairman, just, oh, I guess we could vote, and I was going to have a couple of comments afterwards, but I just wanted to, and this is not to argue any point, because we've done with that, I think we've all pretty well expended all of our ammo tonight. But this one thing I'd urge, because this is my 12th and final budget as a commissioner. And I remember when I first came on this board, we were, he had just freshly won a victory at Supreme Court, I believe it was state, or maybe the federal Supreme Court, in the tax settlement with Philip Morris. And I know that we had a windfall of $26 million that was dropped into our laps that year. I know that the year before I came on, two years before I came on the board, I believe it was, was we had a revale, tax rate was 70 cents. We dropped the tax rate 59 cents that, that year. It was dropped again to 56 cents. I remember very well that Jardine, the board in 2002, I believe it was, took that $26 million, which was originally earmarked because it was a single, one-time revenue source for the county, it was to pay for our fairgrounds and arena event center. And I remember that year, we mortgaged that thing, put us in debt to that arena event center, which we're paying the debt on. If you look it up right now, we have a debt payment, we're paying every year on that, so that we could take that $26 million, and over the next two years, use it to keep the tax rate low. 2005, we ran out of that money. Okay, we went to 53 cents, and then we had to go to 63 cents, and we stayed at 63 cents until this, this budget tonight. When I computed and looked back at it, I know hindsight's 2020, and it probably never would have happened, because it would have been dependent upon different boards to do it. But it's ironic that the amount of money, if you take just purely computing, no inflation, the amount of revenue difference between what the tax rate was for those particular years, and the 70 cents tax rate was equal to the amount of money that we borrowed to build schools with. And I guess, you know, I know that that is very theoretical, because it probably would have never happened, but my point to make is to y'all, at least three of you will be on this board next year, when it comes time for budget again, and I know, I see Steve out there, I'm not sure if Mr. DeWolfe's here or not, too, but he's, okay, but if you look at the budget, local government does not, we can't just turn around and dump it down the next layer. It's where the rubber meets the road. And if we have to build schools, we have to build schools. And I'm thinking, I'm saying that if we know, coming out the road five or six years, if we're going to have to build a school, was it not better to take the excess money and save it now than it is to put ourselves in debt down the road? Because what happened tonight, if we did not have that $493 million in budget, in a debt, school debt, that from building all the schools that we have built over the last 12 years in this county, then we wouldn't even be having, we, we would have been, we'd been home with our feet kicked up, eating popcorn right now, because we would not have had to worry about, because we would have had plenty of room in this budget to stay at 63 cents. But I urge y'all, or urge this board in the future, do long, think long range, don't just think to the next election, don't just think two years, think long range and look strategically at where you think county government should go. And I agree with you, there's a lot of programs out there, and there's a lot of waste, and I'm a bigger believer that local government is where decisions should be made at, and for flexibility to make decisions, and that, that's the reason for that whole human services bill that's in front of the House and the Senate right now in Raleigh, is to provide that flexibility for counties to be able to make decisions for themselves. Too much, in the state, we're not allowed to make decisions, and we're, we're handcuffed and hamstrung. But I would urge this board to really look at it and understand it. Programs are neat, but sometimes you have to make the hard decisions about what you're going to cut, consolidate, reorganize, in order to provide efficiency of services and meet the needs of the community. And sometimes that does force you to have to make hard decisions, and that may not be in keeping with what, you know, the, the political mantra is at the time. So with that, that's my-
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes 3 to 2. Commissioners, I, I'm just going to add this at this point in time, and it's, I guess I should have thought about it sooner, before we did the capital project. In our work sessions, when we talked about the possibilities of some additional capital projects, the one that we all agreed on was to fund Rowan Cabarrus Community College an additional $380,000 in order for them to do the renovation at their 100 building. And it is not part of the agenda tonight. We can put that on July meeting, if you would like to, or we can talk about it tonight and see if we want to give them the go-ahead or what you want to do. That is the one item that we had discussed previously. And I'm perfectly fine putting it on the July meeting, if you want to, but we had talked about that one.
I would, I, I think that RCCC needs to go forward with that renovation, so that I would be in support of it, whether we vote on that tonight or, because we all, in our budget meetings, as it was presented, we were all in consensus. I don't know where we are staying tonight, but I was still standing consensus with RCCC making those renovations. I think as it relates to any other capital projects, I think we need to, I would like to first identify, make certain we all know what projects that the staff needs to look at.
at, schools and county, and then we, once we get that compiled, look at what the cost is, and then look at, is that something we want to go forward? Because in regards to any capital projects, I look at debt first, can we pay, what debt can we pay off? And I think that's been looked at, and we cannot pay anything off without a prepayment penalty this year.
That's correct.
The second thing I would look at is look at what are the projects, county and schools, that can be looked at? And the third thing is what, something that Commissioner Carruth just said that I was thinking is, is it better to pool any money to do a pay-as-you-go project? And if it's a pay-as-you-go project, just off the top of my head, the number one, one and one A, no particular order, would be a replacement for Royal Oaks, or a replacement for Mount Pleasant Middle School, would be my top two issues that we need to look at. I'm not saying that the four, the remaining would look at that, but, so I think, pay off debt, look at capital projects, and then also, do we, are we better served to do a pay-as-you-go project or projects, if that's possible, with any excess?
I would like to add any, in a future meeting, we do need to talk about any other projects. The only project that I wanted to just see if there was, if we want to amend the agenda or if we want to wait till next month, was, again, Rowan Cabarrus Project, everybody at that time was unanimous. Commissioner Burridge, are you in agreement of doing the Rowan Cabarrus Project?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Meesmer?
Yeah, I would say I'll make a motion to, because I know Dr. Spohr has waited patiently all evening long to hear this, and then went totally, going to wait and consider it next month, and she's had an evening, she probably could have done something else, but, so I think if we can go ahead and vote on it tonight, I would support it as well.
Are you okay with adding it? Are you okay with adding? Okay, then, may I have a motion to amend the agenda?
She'll move.
To add a capital project for Rowan Cabarrus Community College renovation, to fund an additional $380,000 to complete that project that we previously discussed. So, we have a motion to amend the agenda, motion and second?
Mm-hmm.
You made the motion, sorry.
I made the motion.
You made the motion, I'm sorry. You seconded it. All in favor of amending, adding it to the agenda?
I think it's very clear that it needs to be, the five of us know this, and I think that the general public knows this, but I want to make certain we are very clear. It does not affect our budget.
Right.
It's a capital project, which is outside of the budget, which is part of the monies that we have in savings, it's going to be a pay-as-you-go project. So it's not going to affect any tax rate in regards to that, in regards to that, that...
That's correct.
Okay.
So we have a motion to amend the agenda and add that item, a motion and second. All those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, I would accept a motion to provide $380,000 of additional capital money to be used for the Rowan Cabarrus Community College renovation project, as previously presented. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The next item we have is F3, which we moved down to be new business.
I'd make a motion to approve the HCCBG funding plan and the reorganization recommended by the HCCBG committee.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
On the last agenda item, would you also add the approval of the budget revision, so that we can take care of that?
You said.
That's what he said.
Isn't that what you said?
Yes. Thank you. It's nice to have staff that always makes sure we get the language right. Apologize.
You said it.
Again, okay, we have a motion for the HCCBG funding plan and reorganization fiscal year 13 to approve. I know you made the motion, did you second? Did he my second? Commissioner Carruth seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Five-oh. Thank you, I just, I'm having trouble hearing tonight. I can speak loudly, I just can't hear for much. Okay, well, I want to make sure that you are counted. If I can't hear you, nobody else can hear you. Let's move to appointments.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Mrs. Esther Turner to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending May 31, 2015.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have appointments to the Board of Equalization and Review.
I'd make a motion to reappoint Glenn Tucker and Keith Troutman, alternate to the Board of Equalization and Review, for three-year terms ending June 30, 2015.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have appointments to Cabarrus County Youth Council.
Commissioner Meesmer? You want to make that motion?
Page 274.
I move that the terms of appointment for the following members of the Cabarrus County Youth Council end Ian Smith, Taylor Fur, Elbeth Wickliffe, Cameron Watson, Wells King, Elena Dean, and Georgie Ziyama. Upon completion of the youth council, interviews of the following students are recommended for appointment, Stephen Larson, Leslie Porphy, Harrison Allen, and Kyla Amonki.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And yes, they will be for the terms as presented.
As presented in the agenda.
Yes, as presented in the agenda. Okay, next, we have appointments to the Central Island Workforce Development Board. There is one position.
Motion to reappoint Milton Chikis, private sector, to the Central Island Workforce Development Board for a two-year term ending June 30, 2014, with an exception to the residency provisions of the appointment policy.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, we have appointments to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Motion to reappoint Megan Bumgardner, Eddie Moss, Mark Entasik, for two-year terms ending June 30, 2014, and to appoint Myra Perusik to the JCPC for a two-year term ending June 30, 2014, as presented in the agenda.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have appointments to the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County.
As, you need to note that Mrs. Castradel is not available, or not able to be appointed, so that I would make a motion to appoint James T. Mack Jr. to the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County for a three-year term ending June 30, 2015, as requested by the CHA, and a motion to appoint Mr. Tom Kincaid, public member unaffiliated, for a three-year term ending June 30, 2015, and those two as a result of Mrs. Castradel not being able to be reappointed.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One thing before we move off of that, is that Dr. Vucinic is, is attending school, and he will be on the board at least through August, depending on his class schedules and what his commitment is for education, that he may have to come off the board, but that will be in August. But I wanted to give everybody forewarning, and we do have Mrs. Derry Caldwell as an applicant right now for, for that position, but Dr. Vucinic does hold a distinction of being a dentist, and with the dental services, that that's an important aspect of the Health Alliance Board.
So if there is a dentist that is at 9:30 at night watching TV, that's interested in serving on the Health Alliance Board, Mr. Phillips will tell you it's a great position, and we would love to have your application. Next, we have the Region F Aging Advisory Committee.
Motion to reappoint Mary Beth Croom for a two-year term ending June 30, 2014, and reappoint Mrs. Anita Helms, alternate for a one-year term ending June 30, 2013, to the Region F Aging Advisory Committee, including exceptions to the appointment policy as requested by the Central Carolina of Governments.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I oppose the idea of Anita Helms, and I actually not agree with it.
Okay.
Well...
Okay.
Mrs. Helms, okay, I would withdraw that motion since we're still in session, and I would withdraw that motion and strike out Mrs. Helms per her request, so that that position would still be open at this point in time.
I have that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, my intent with that motion was to strike Mrs. Helms per her request, and it would be, still be the reappointment of Mrs. Croom. It did not evolve, it did not change that, though, okay, I wanted to make certain we're clear on that.
Yes, sir. Okay, next, we have Tourism Authority.
Make your motion, well...
I'll make a motion to appoint Joel Griffin, hotelier to seat number six, as nominated by the Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce, to the Tourism Authority for a three-year term ending June 30, 2015, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy. Motion to appoint William Rinks, hotelier to seat number five of the Tourism Authority, nominated by the Tourism Authority for a three-year term ending June 30, 2015. Motion to appoint Jennifer Parsley, at-large, to seat number 11, to the Tourism Authority, nominated by the Tourism Authority for a three-year term ending June 30, 2015. And a motion to reappoint Jay White, County Commissioner, to fill seat number four, at-large, BOC member or county manager, for a three-year term ending June 30, 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you would have recused yourself?
No, I don't need to recuse myself, since that board is set up the way it's set up. I would not, it's not a recusal.
Just want to make sure.
Just to let you know.
Okay, good enough. Okay, now, we have appointments to the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County. You can do that one.
Motion to appoint or reappoint members to the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County for three-year terms ending 2015.
Those members would be?
Commissioner Carruth and Commissioner Poole.
There you go. Commissioner Carruth and Commissioner Poole. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We also have reports that are available to you later, CVB, and at this time, are there any updates that Board of Commissioners would like to give based on boards that we serve on or liaisons that we attend?
Madam Chair, on the matter of PBH, PBH is, you know, we passed a resolution last month for the reorganization of PBH as Cardinal Innovations, that PBH will have its last official board meeting as PBH on June 28, which is next Thursday evening. There will be, as of July 1, Cardinal Innovations organization will kick in. We had a meeting today, actually, to discuss the...
Can you slow down? Cardinal Innovations?
Cardinal Innovations Behavioral Healthcare.
Cardinal?
Cardinal.
Cardinal?
As in Redbird.
Okay.
Cardinal Innovations Behavioral Healthcare. And there will be, of course, they'll be working on, and putting together the new board terms, the new board members for that organization, that will be part of the Community Oversight Board, and that will be forthcoming.
Any other comments? Anybody? Any other commissioners?
Tourism is doing an amazing job this year. I mean, Mrs. Carpenter and her staff have just, it's scary because of the number of home runs they're hitting out there, that winds the well going to run dry. The, in 2014 or 2015, I believe, is the 50-year reunion of Mustangs, as it relates to the eastern, 2014, as it relates to the eastern seaboard of the United States, so that everybody, well, everybody can come from Hawaii, whomever, we'll take everybody. But there is a east coast, and there's a west coast. West coast is going to be in Las Vegas, east coast is going to be in Cabarrus County, so that we could not have done that without the help of, not we, she could not have done that without the help of the Charlotte Motor Speedway, and everybody out there have done a tremendous job to bring that in here, and that's going to be tremendous. Buick, Buick Car Club of America, and I apologize if I mistake, misspoke what their name is, they're coming in this year. So there's, it's a tremendous effort that they're doing in regards to tourism and what they're bringing here to Cabarrus County. And that's all the reports I have regards to board. I would like to make a general comment at the appropriate time.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, as a reminder, we do have a number of county boards and committees that have vacancies, and in the, considering the time, I won't read through those, those are posted on the county website. Please, 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 get involved. We have a number of positions that are open, and a number of very critical positions that we need to get filled. Now, we have general comments by board members. Commissioner White?
Earlier in the evening, we had a presentation by A.L. Fleming regarding rescinding our prior decision. I think, I don't believe we can do that legally. If we can, please let me know, or let us know, Mr. Cook, but I don't believe we can do that legally.
That is correct. They withdrew their offer, so there's nothing to consider, and the county still has their $500 bid deposit. I do think if they wish to make a new bid, that that, with the, with the board's approval, that, that bid deposit could be transferred to a new opening bid on their part, because it was never officially forfeited by the board. So it's just been sitting there. So if the board, if they do make a new proposal, you know, I'd say, I think the board could vote to allow them to transfer that bid deposit, it's $500.
I just want to make certain, I didn't think that was something we could do legally, and just wanted to make certain that was right. And then second is, it's Ms. Wilson's birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday.
And third, it was your birthday yesterday, so happy birthday. Yeah. Any other general comments? I have one, but, okay, and I told you I was going to get back to you, okay? Well, not necessarily. Okay, I just want to let you know, because I don't think this is, I've said it in public meetings, but I don't know that it's gone any further than that. We are looking at the possibility of using some of those funds for one-time projects. So one of the things, because what I heard from you is that the senior center needs more space. So what I have asked of the county manager and our facility staff is to look at that and see what the options would be. When I stand and look at the building, because that's where I vote, I know that the left-hand side comes out further than the right-hand side. So that could be an option, to add something on the front side of that building. There also could be some renovation options. I have no idea, I don't know anything about buildings, so I would be the last person to talk about it. But over a month ago, I asked the county manager if they could start looking at things, and this is looking at it without spending any money, using our staff. And as we proceed over, I would presume, the next six months, we will be looking at projects that, for our buildings, for schools, for Rowan Cabarrus we've taken care of tonight, if there are certain projects that we feel that are critical for buildings. And I know that Commissioner Burridge and I have talked a lot about maintenance, because he's very concerned about maintenance. Commissioner White's been very concerned about technology, and I know that both of you guys have had concerns, too. So we're trying to look at that and make a very good decision as far as that goes. And so I have no commitment at this point in time, but just know that we are at least looking at that situation and trying to determine, can we get you another room for, that you can use for programming? And as we proceed, we'll keep you informed, okay? Thank you. Okay, the next thing we have is, we do have a closed session tonight.